Joined by my colleagues Mayor Pro Tem Kraut, Council members Albrecht, Bazagian, and Shapiro, as well as city staff. If you would like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for oral communication public comment. When you are called to speak, please state your name and the city that you live in. You will be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by our interim city clerk, Ana Luis Mendoza.
(Inaudible) 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 Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We met in closed session prior to this meeting. Does the city attorney have anything to report out?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session and considered one item regarding potential initiation of litigation and did take reportable action, namely directed the initiation of a lawsuit, the particulars of which will be available upon the service of the suit. The council deferred consideration of item number two regarding anticipated litigation related to facts and circumstances that may result in litigation, but which the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiffs or plaintiffs to a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to start our meeting with a presentation from our friends from the Las Verginis Municipal Water District. The presentation is on water supply and the future of water. We are joined by Public Affairs and Communications Manager Mike McNutt to make the presentation along with Andy Kordashi with the Board of Directors, and Gary Burns.
Hi, City Council. Hi, Mayor. Hi, distinguished council members. Thank you so much for having us. I'd like to go ahead and introduce a couple of my board members here. Director Gary Burns and Director Andy Koradeski. And they both serve different parts of Calabasas, but they would like to say a couple of words, if you don't mind, before we get into the water stuff.
Into the water stuff. I like that. Thank you all, council members, and Mayor Weintraub. As many of you know, you have known me for 20 or more years living here, and I really honor you and the city for taking on the responsibility. Back in the drought of 2022, I took advantage of 1,200 years of drought and said, if you vote for me, I'll try to make it rain. Two winters in a row. I've been very lucky. So we very much appreciate some of your time discussing water and the future of water and our pure water project, which Mike's going to talk about. He's going to discuss the current water status, several accomplishments of our programs and initiatives, what we do with the schools, and many people that come and visit, as many of you have, and all of what our future water looks like, which is both good, and there are some things where Metropolitan and some of the rest of the state and the whole country has many things that water is becoming more and more difficult when there isn't rain, and becoming more and more important, as we all know. It takes many, many gallons of water to make just about everything we use, including a light bulb in a car and every bit of food that we drink or eat. So before Mike, as he mentioned, I'm going to introduce my colleague, Angie Koradeshi.
Thanks, Gary. Yes, Andy Koradeski, I just wanted to let you know, so I represent the eastern, excuse me, the western part of Calabasas, so Lupin Hill and Saratoga Hills and Mount Colicbasas and Deer Springs. It's where I have spent the last 25 years of my life next door in Agoura Hills, and my children went to Lupin Hill and to A U Wright, and we love the area. And I don't want to keep you too long. We do have a good presentation tonight, and I think Mike is ready to go.
Thank you, Andy and Gary, and welcome, Mike.
Thank you, directors. I apologize, I'm slightly embarrassed, I forgot to put director next to Andy's name, so I apologize for that. But he is a director, I promise. Okay, cool. So thanks for having us. What we're doing is we're trying to go to all of the communities and give an update on different issues when it comes to water, what the water district's doing, the current supply of water that we have right now, and kind of share with you anything and everything that we possibly can about how what we do impacts the city here and just the region as a whole. Is this a clicker for me, I guess? Okay. Cool. So we're going to talk a little bit about, and I'll try to make this as brief as possible, we're going to talk a little bit about current water supply conditions, of course, and some different initiatives that we have going on right now. Hopefully, there will be some questions that we can answer from you, but there's a lot of exciting things happening to ensure that we provide the region long-term water reliability and create resiliency to climate change impacts and other possible natural disasters that may impact the region. This was taken, I know, from May 14th, so about a week ago or so, maybe 10 days ago. I just checked today, the status has not changed. So this year, we have 47.2 inches of rain and snow. It's slightly under the average, but not by much. The good news is that all of our reservoirs are brimming with water right now, and we have received 40% of our water allocation, which is wonderful. We only need 30% to take care of all of our needs, both indoor and outdoor, so 40% is wonderful. And we still like to drive home the idea that we still need to conduct ourselves that conservation is a California way of life, and so we all need to consider and continue to conserve everywhere we can, just so we can get used to it. There are some things that we contend with on a regular basis, of course, climate change impacts, creating erratic weather patterns that's unpredictable, which means that we can't always count on knowing how much water or snowpack is going to happen in this year in Nevada's, which is where we get our water, 400 miles away. We have one singular water source at this moment in time. Just like many things, we have aging infrastructure. Our district was created in 1958. There's still plenty of original piping throughout the service area. I'll talk a little bit about what we're going to do with that, and typically, at the time that those pipes were put in the ground, they have about a 70-year lifespan, so many of those things are going to be needed to be replaced as we move forward in time. We're also obviously looking at diversifying our water portfolio, because again, like I just said, we have one singular source of water. There are many things that are, you know, that we see in the news. Some of them are emerging constituents of emerging concern, and it's a kind of a mouthful. But things that we've talked about, microplastics and PFOS, those are things that we look at on a regular basis, because we obviously want to ensure that the water that we provide, the residents and businesses here in Calabasas and throughout the region, is not just safe, but it's clean and it's healthy and it's cost-effective. And there is a limited resource. Just because our reservoirs are brimming with water doesn't mean that we can let down. We have to change our behavior where conservation is at the forefront of how we conduct ourselves when it comes to water usage. Some of our achievements that we've had this year, one of the things that I'm incredibly proud of, and I think all of us should be very proud of, is that changing people's behavior is very challenging and very difficult when it comes to literally anything. But what we did was, during this last drought, the governor had us compare water usage to 2020 usage. So this figure here, about a 30% reduction in water use, means that our entire region, on average, is using 30% less water now than they did in 2020. What that tells us and tells me is that people have changed their behavior and their relationship with water to make sure that they understand it's a very, if not the most precious of all resources. And because of that, just in 2023 alone, we almost saved about 6,000 acre feet of water, just by cutting how much we use, changing our relationship with them, landscape transformations, all that kind of stuff, which kind of is a good segue into, we have just launched, or recently launched, a landscape transformation program. We've held multiple workshops for all the communities in the area. We've done 116 turf replacement projects where people removed their thirsty lawns and put in climate-appropriate landscaping. We've given away or sold 177 native plant kits. People are excited about rain barrels, and one of the really interesting things that was very popular was our irrigation efficiency retrofit program. So what that means is that people who have an older irrigation system, they can apply for this, will go out, we won't, but a company will go out and retrofit their existing system with high-efficiency nozzles and maybe drip irrigation as well. That way, they can conserve water. In case anybody is wondering, 70% of all residential water usage is for outdoor irrigation. That's where we can make the biggest savings. And then, just in 2023, we installed 493 smart irrigation controllers. It takes the guesswork out of people and puts it right into the computer. Specifically with the landscape transformation program, we are very excited about this. We've gotten a lot of interest in this, and basically, this is literally taking out your lawn, putting in climate-appropriate landscaping, and one of the other benefits to doing that is you're actually becoming part of the local ecosystem, and that provides habitat for our pollinators, which are in need of having some good habitat, because they are arguably part of the foundation of our ecosystems here. And for anybody that's interested in this, we're kind of working in tandem with Metropolitan Water District. You can get, if you wanted to remove your lawn there, you can still get $3 per square foot of lawn removed, which is great, and you can always call us for help on that. As I mentioned about aging infrastructure, you know, a lot of our pipes, you know, 70-plus years old now, and we're seeing, of course, different places where they just give out, just simply because of how old they are. So what we're going to do, starting actually this month, we have started this month, is we're doing a study and looking at all of the infrastructure that we have, over 400 miles of pipe, prioritizing where we need to start potentially going in and replacing that pipe and being proactive about it instead of reactive about it. And it's going to be based on different things, how old they are, the type of material that the pipe's made out of, is there a leak history associated with that? So there's a different criteria that we're creating in order for us to get to a place where we can say, we're confident that this report, and we'll start implementing and executing what that is. So it's going to be, you know, some capital investment that's going to obviously go into that. We can't do it for free, but again, our main focus is providing long-term reliable water to everybody here, and so this is just part of what we have to do. As I mentioned before, we have some really cool things that we're doing, and you know, as I mentioned, we have one singular source of water. Right now, what we need to do is diversify our water portfolio, just like any healthy financial portfolio. The more diverse your investments are, you can ride out the ups and downs of the stock market. This is the same thing here, except the stock market might be drought, and it might be erratic weather patterns and climate change and those impacts as well. So what we're doing is we're going to do another study starting this year, and we're going to look at how can we and where can we actually physically store water, where can we get additional water supply from, and we're looking at doing unique things. One of the things that I'm excited about is a partnership, is a public-private partnership that we developed with a company called Oceanwell. And what this is, is deep water desalination. There is an environmental-first approach to this, and so this isn't your traditional desal plan on a beach somewhere that's just like sucking a bunch of water in from the ocean, you know, and sending out giant amounts of brine, which is salt, and that actually has major negative impacts on aquatic life and has pretty significant footprint on the ocean floor. Instead, what this is, is a sphere, we'll call it. It'll be submerged 1,400 feet under the ocean, and what's cool about it is that the hydrostatic pressure or the weight of the ocean, or Mother Nature, is actually going to push the reverse osmosis process. There's little to no brine associated with that. It's down in something called the aphotic zone, so there's no light that's penetrating it, so the biological activity is minimized at best, and so there's not a lot going on down there. And what we can do is, if this would ever come to fruition, we could possibly get 15% of our water supply from ocean desalination with no environmental impacts. And what's really cool about it is in August of this year, we're using a reservoir in West Lake Village as a testing ground for this technology. And you may say, well, that's fresh water. It's not to be 1,400 feet down, of course, but what's different about it is apparently the fresh water in that environment is more stressful on that technology than it is in the ocean. So what's going to happen is that we'll get good data from it. If there's any need for research and development or tweaks to that, that'll happen, and we're already working simultaneously in that private-public partnership with them on looking at citing possibilities in the ocean to actually create a pilot in the ocean in the next couple of years. We're excited about this. So that's one thing. Another thing I want to mention, because a drought is still, I know, something that we all have in the back of our mind, one of the other parts of the future of water is interconnectivity between different water agencies. So right now, we have an intertie connection with our neighbors at Keyagus, and that's a pipe going all the way down Linderow Canyon Road. What that provides us is the opportunity to share water with them, and they can share water with us. We're also looking at potentially putting a pipe down Malibu Canyon all the way down into Malibu at District 29 for the exact same purpose. And if we get to a place where we can actually have an ocean desalination option like this that we're talking about, there's a pipe that's going to hopefully exist that would be able to bring that water directly into the service area. These are the kind of things that we're thinking about. We're trying to be creative, we're trying to be thoughtful, and we're trying to think outside the box. The other part to this, too, is we're also looking at exchange agreements and groundwater banking in different areas, one, for instance, maybe the Antelope Valley. The point is, is that we're trying to get the water that we have, that we could get, store it in different places, use it during dry times to make sure that what happened before a couple of years ago with the drought never happens again to our region. That's what this is about, and it's responsible to do this. I know that we, I won't go over this, because I know that one of my colleagues is going to come at a later time to really get into the meat of the Pure Water Project, but what I'll say right now is that we've awarded a design contract, design-build contract, right here, to Brown and Caldwell and to Corolla Engineers. We're at a 10% design right now. This will continue to progress as we move forward. We will break ground in late 2025 to early 2026. The property where this is going to be located is in Agora Hills off Agora Road, sort of, I guess, in between Reyes Adobe and Linderow Canyon, next to that old, is it the Hilton Building there, kind of like just a little bit down from there. It's a great location, so right now, we're thinking about what's that going to look like, the architecture associated with it, and some other components to that as well. This will be online in 2028, and then we'll provide 30% of our water needs here locally. The trend in the industry is not to rely on the state water project and state, it is, that is the backbone and will be of our water supply, but really, what we're trying to do is localize as much of that as possible to take care of ourselves, so we're not relying on erratic weather patterns and climate change impacts. That's what this is about. We are doing some really cool things with customer service, and this goes back to the water quality stuff. The US EPA has mandated that all water agencies do a thorough study of all their pipes, and that means both from our side of the meter to the resident's side of the meter. And what we're looking for is copper and lead in the pipes, and I can say that we have zero lead and zero copper in any of our water in any of our pipes. We have been doing a study about every three years randomly throughout the district, and we've still come back with nothing, and this just kind of like, it puts an exclamation mark on that. So our water is safe from lead and copper, just to let you know. We have installed 21,000 smart meters, and smart meters are cool for a variety of different reasons. One of the biggest ones that helps detect leaks in near real time. Long-term, this is a great way to conserve water. It also minimizes excess water usage. For people who don't know how much water they're using, they can just log on to their account for free in their portal, and they can see how much water they're using. It also provides us, talking apples to apples, instead of apples to oranges, when it comes to any issues with billing or any concerns about the bill. So we're excited about that, and we started with the homeowners, and now we're getting to the larger ones as well. One of the other things that we're very, very big on is talking to our elected officials at all levels of government, and the reason for that is because what we try to do is get them to be educated on all the things that we're doing, any of the issues that we're up against, and also find out if there's funds that they can provide to us in the form of different grants to help minimize any impacts on our customers for a lot of these capital improvement projects that we're talking about. We have done, we go from Sacramento to Washington DC to local offices, but we're all trying to make sure that we do what we do to get them engaged and be very aware of everything that's going on in the region, specifically when it comes to water in our future plans as well. So we like doing that. To kind of wrap this up, unfortunately, there is an increase, like everything, right now, we're all seeing inflation, and inflation's making literally everything in our lives increase in price. And unfortunately, that's also going to be the case for water. Metropolitan Water District is raising their rates, which is a pass-through for all of their member agencies, to all customers throughout all Southern California. In 2025, they're going to raise 11% rate, and then in 2026, it's going to be 10%. And then they're also doing something called an ad valorem, which is a property tax, and they're going to double that, so it's going to be about three extra dollars a month for median for a household anywhere pretty much in Southern California within their service area. Now, these increases, as I've kind of alluded to about our aging infrastructure, of course, is infrastructure. It's also lower water sales, and we can talk about that if you want to, but I won't take too much of your time. But it's also to increase resiliency to climate change impacts and so forth. It's also monitoring for PFOS, so there's a lot of things that we have that are need to have an increase in cost to make sure that we are collectively providing all of our customers, all of our businesses in the region with the best possible water that we can. And then, we as an agency are also looking at doing a rate study. That'll commence sometime this summer. It is a whole year-long effort. There is something called Prop 218 that we have to abide by. It's a strictly regulated way for us to have to go through this state mandated process before we raise any rates. There's tons of public comments, we'll have to do a lot of public meetings, but this is something that we have to do about every five years. And what we do is, you know, again, these rates are going to end up costing, you know, for inflation, resiliency, regulations, infrastructure improvement, and stuff like that. So that's really all I have for you. I tried to make this as quick as possible without getting into so much detail. The one last thing I'd like to say is, we as a water agency just absolutely appreciate the city of Calabasas being such wonderful partners with us. I love working with all the staff here. The staff here has just been phenomenal. I'm sorry to see my pal Mike retire, but I'm happy for him as well, but we've had a great run, a great hire with Scott over here. It's just a wonderful, it's a wonderful city. I love to call this like my home where I work. I just value this very much, and we just love having partners like you to work with. So thank you. We're happy to take any questions, and if our directors would like to answer any questions too, so.
Thank you so much, Mike. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments? Ed?
Thank you, Mike. That was awesome. I'd like to record that and play it back for anybody who has any questions on Las Verginis water. It's so thorough on all aspects, and we're very lucky. You claim to, you know, you're lucky to work here and live here, and we are as well. It's amazing. It's amazing that for so much of our lifetime, we took water for granted. You turn it on, you turn it off, it's hot, it's cold, you fill up the pool, it's so much more than that. And I had the Rachio put in. I'm not quite sure how to use it. The gardener's better at that than I am, but I'm learning, but it's really amazing, because for those residents that don't have it, it can actually read when it's going to rain, and many, many times, it hasn't gone off, and I'll get it on my phone, it skipped one of the sessions. So I do have a couple of questions. I'll make it quick, because I know council members have as well. When you said 47 inches of rain and snow, is that taken up north or is that taken down here?
No, that's up north. That's in the Sierras.
Yeah, I was just curious. Yeah, I didn't think we had that much here.
No, 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 we didn't. No.
And just one comment, really, I'll keep it short. Everybody that works with a water district, I think you must have taken a DNA test, because they all believe and feel the water system. They care about it, they're knowledgeable on it, and easy to ask questions for. We couldn't ask for better partners. I'm so happy to see it from the inside, and I hope to see it for many more years.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, council member.
David?
Thank you so much. Everyone for being here, the presentation. You took the words out of my mouth. We really are thrilled to have a great partnership with all of you to provide clean, environmentally thoughtful water for all our residents in the region. The smart water irrigation systems you talked about, or Ed just referenced, are those similar to the smart water irrigation systems we put in our city parks and properties along the medians back in 2014, 15, that go up to a satellite, provide information, and then either shut off or go on depending upon the...
Yeah. They're similar. They're just a little bit newer, but in theory, they're the same thing, yes.
Okay, and for residents, the things you described, and I know you were very clear in it, but the incentives for residents for either the irrigation system or retrofitting, are those, those are all available, and they can contact or look online for the water?
Yes, just go to LVMWD.com, and all that information's there.
Great. And last but not least, the, any thought, I guess this goes for anybody, on the governor's recent budget proposals, which include cutting on, I believe, infrastructure for water throughout the state?
Yep.
How that might affect us as a city and our region?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I did a crash course on what that means. So the governor cut $500 million out of Prop 1 funding that was actually passed as a bond in 2014, right? And so it's very convoluted and kind of complex, but I'll say it this way, $7.7 billion of Prop 1 money has been available for some type of water infrastructure. 2.7 billion of that was for actually storage. So where does the 500 million come in? Last year, a group of people, including the Association of California Water Agencies, advocated the governor to increase $500 million to offset inflation costs, so $2014 to $2024. So what he did was, hey, 500 million, that makes it more even. So what he did was he took that 500 million out. So what that means is that all that money is still there originally, that's still available, but it just means that it's not going to stretch as far as it would have, because he had to cut that out, and that's what that means. In terms of us, it's not really going to directly impact us, it'll be more of an indirect thing, like in certain different ways, but again, it's kind of complex. And that's why what we do is we go out of our way to look for low-interest loans, grants, like state grants and federal grants, and we've actually done really well with that, and we have, you know, whole things that'll help minimize our capital improvement infrastructure, specifically the pure water facility, because we are actively going out and trying to find ways to minimize the burden to the taxpayer, to our taxpayers and to our customers.
Thank you very much.
Yes, of course.
Peter?
Thank you all. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Andy, for showing up here. Thank you for representing our residents. Thank you, Mike, for sharing all this great information with us.
Thank you.
I've taken the Pure Water Project tour. I've drank the water.
And you're still here.
And I'm still here. It's a phenomenal project, and for anybody who hasn't seen it, in front of the Pure Water Project at the LVMWD headquarters is a beautiful garden of native plants. So if you're considering doing a turf replacement and want to pick out some plants that you'd like to have in your front yard, they're all there, and they're all labeled, so you can look them up, and they've got QR codes and everything. So like Ed, we put in a Rachio controller, and I took advantage of the turf replacement and redid my whole front yard. So thank you for putting those programs together. State water project dependent, that's, I'm glad that you're mentioning that, I want to emphasize that. In order to reduce our dependency on the state water project, you didn't mention the Colorado River. Could you maybe talk about the Sepulveda Pumping Station, the design and potential construction in the future?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Mayor Pro Tem. I know that you have been a big advocate of trying to like figure out how to solve that issue. For us who don't know, Sepulveda Pass, I like to call it a pinch point, I guess, in the Metropolitan distribution system, and so where this is right now, at least the last that I was told, is that Metropolitan has designated a pretty good chunk of money to study how to fix that problem. They're not just aware of it, they're actively looking to fix that. So what this means for us is that rather than just having one simple, one source of water, getting that fixed will be able to provide us with duplicity of water resources, and that means we'll get Colorado, or some Colorado River water over the Sepulveda Pass to help us if we don't have a lot coming from the state water project. So that is happening for sure.
Okay, and we're going to keep up the pressure on the construction side of that after the design is done, right?
Agreed, yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, we are very, the water district is very aware of that, and we advocate for that quite a bit.
Okay. And then for the residents, you mentioned leaks, and I know leaks, if we could fix all of our leaks, we would solve all of our water problems. Is that right?
We would probably have, we would save a lot of, we would definitely save a lot of water, yes.
Yeah. So if a resident has a high water... So if a resident has a high water bill and determines that they have a leak and gets it repaired, what does LVMWD do to help cover that cost?
Yeah, we have a leakage, we have a leak adjustment program. And so what that means is that if you find that you're a leak, you fix it and your water bill's high, you call our customer service manager, Ursula Bossen, and she will work with you to get some of that bill taken care of. So we do offer that service to our customers because, you know, sometimes you just don't that there's a leak and you shouldn't be penalized for that.
Great, another great, another great service. The last question would be, if we are currently using all of the purple pipe water for irrigation and we go to the Pure Water Project, we are going to lose all of that purple pipe water because it's all going to go through the Pure Water Project. Where does the extra water come from?
No, so the the purple pipe water, the one that we have for all of those connections, that's all going to be serviced. That's not going to be part of the the Pure Water Project. So sometimes if people would drive down Las Virginas Road and they would see, you know, we we own property all the way down to Mahaland and some, we call that the spray fields. And sometimes there's water spraying on there. That's the excess water that is going to be part of the water that we would use, that we will be using for our drinking water source or a part of our drinking water source. Sometimes six months out of the year, we're allowed to discharge into Malibu Creek. That's also something we're not going to do. So there's going to be plenty, there's going to be enough water to satisfy, again, like 30% of our water needs locally. But the other thing that we're doing is because the plant, when it's built, is going to have a capacity to actually treat more water than we're going to be able to deliver to that. So we're looking at different ways to bring additional water in. One of is like urban runoff. So sometimes like when people are over irrigating or they're sprinkling, just shooting off and you see like water running down into the storm sewer system, we're looking at ways to capture that, putting it back at the wastewater treatment plant and then treating it further there and then further. That's an option. We're also working with neighboring communities to find out if there's other ways to bring in water that they may not be using. And we can also use that as another source. So we're looking at different ways to regionalize this as an asset, not just for our service area.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
James?
Yes, thank you, Mike. I have a couple of questions. One, one of them is something I've asked before about what happened during the drought when people were excused from maintaining their lawns and their property. And it overrode HOA provisions, other municipal codes. So when this happens, then we go back into a period where the drought's lifted, then we go back into a drought and it's going to be cyclical. I understand it's going to happen. What what provision is there for, I mean, what happens? Are we required to bring our our lawns and other foliage back into compliance or not under the state's regulations?
Are you specifically talking like during a drought and then like you're, I I remember what you what you were talking about is that there's there's HOA regulations about how you can main or should be in maintaining your outdoor living space or your your yards. And then during the drought, there was, there is a mandate, I believe, I don't know the exact like state mandate or resolution that there is, but it kind of overrode that. And what that meant is that like if there are local agencies that have specific limits on outdoor irrigation because of the drought, that that would supersede those HOA regulations. When the drought was over and that was lifted, then I think what you're asking me is, does it go back to that? Like I think I'm a little bit?
Are you permanently excused from from compliance? Or who's who's paying for that? The homeowner to comply and then have it go brown and then comply and have it go brown?
I mean, I sup, I I mean, I, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Does the Water District have any programs of assistance for people that are stuck in that cycle?
I don't know. I think all of us are stuck in that cycle. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't, no, we don't have a specific program for that, no.
Okay. Tell me about artificial turf. Are you discouraging people from using that these days?
Yeah, so what people don't know, okay, artificial turf is made out of basically some type of plastic material. And that plastic material, many of them, not all of them, have PFOS in them. And that's what makes them shine. That's one thing. So like oftentimes when it will rain, you know, when it does rain and, you know, the the probably the impact of the sun on there is going to deteriorate that. So we may see more PFOS as running off into the environment. That's one thing. The second thing is when you put basically a big sheet of plastic over your your dirt in your yard, it's going to have a major impact on everything that lives in the dirt. So that's another issue with that. It kind of looks okay, I guess, one, you know, here and there, but I don't think that we have really a position on that per se. What I'm telling you is what I know about the impacts of that, but the district doesn't have a specific position on that. I don't like it myself, but as a district, we don't have that position on that.
You mentioned there are native lots, like I I assume these are lots of like plants that are available. Could you expand upon that?
I'm sorry, what?
You said there were native plant lots available, like I guess they're boxed or something?
Oh, yeah. We we had, we had a native, a native program where we worked with a nursery here in the LA area. And I think it was also with the tree people, if you've heard of them. And basically, we got a box of stuff and we sent it out, well, we sent out this information to a big swath of our service area. And we got about 177 people that were interested in that. We created these boxes for them. They came and they picked them up from the district and they went back home and, you know, obviously planted them, I would presume.
Do you have that available still?
That was like something that we probably will do, but it's not like a constant thing. It's just going to be like, hey, we're doing this and once in a while.
Okay, last question is, some people have complained and and I've I've gotten some of these complaints and, you know, I'm sure you've heard them too, that sometimes a water district says something like, you know, everyone's done really well on conservation, but because you're using less water, we're not collecting as much money, so we need to raise the rates. So it's it seems to a lot of people that they're being kind of punished for being for conservation efforts. What what does a water district, does a water district have any policy or response to that? And I think you understand some of the frustration that people have with that because then they wonder why they should have conserved in the first place. If their, if their bills are just going to go up, the more they conserve.
Sure, that's a great, that's a great comment. And I think everybody is frustrated with how much things cost right now and how and where and where this seems like things are going right now. And so I I liken it to this. You have a car, let's say you don't drive that much, right? But you still pay taxes for that road that you're going to drive on when you need to. You know, it's 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 just, it's kind of the same thing. And the way that we have our our billing system set up is budget based. So what that means is that there's fixed costs associated and a ready to serve, ready to serve charge associated with the infrastructure itself, the meter charge and such. That's how we make sure that there is some specific revenue coming into the district to satisfy all of our needs in terms of like, you know, making sure that the bills are paid and the infrastructure setup and just the basic operational functions of the district. Where people can save on their water bill is staying in their efficient tiers. And so they just use use less water. That's how that works. So, you know, when it comes to like what it means to like, you know, you use less water, but the rates are going up, it's the delivery system that is what those increased rates are paying for. When you need water, when you want water, you have to turn on your faucet and it's there. You want to flush your toilet, the water's got to be there. And unfortunately, just like everything else, everything is going up in in price. And that's the reality of that. And there's really no way to sugarcoat anything. There's no excuse for that. It's just, it's just the way that it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just end by saying thank you so much. I'm so appreciative how forward-thinking the Water District is. I wish all the utilities and everyone else we worked with was the same way. I think the point that is really, the best thing you said all night is really about the infrastructure study to see the age of the pipes. I wish everyone did that. I mean, we've been begging SCE to do that with their infrastructure. It's just as everything's aging, it's so important. And my other comment is just how user-friendly your programs are. Like we did the turf replacement, we have the Rachio, but the other great thing is every night I get a text message about my notification from Las Virginas Municipal Water District telling me how much water I've consumed that day. So it's it's great. So I know and you can tell, like certain days it's higher or lower if the pool water's running, using the washing machine, but it's such an easy tool to have. So I just wanted to thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And last thing I'll say is I forgot to mention that old Curtis over here is a great hire for your Public Works Director.
Thank you.
I tried to cover all my bases.
Yeah, you're good. So thank you. We have to move on to our budget in a minute, so.
I wanted to cover a couple of things that everybody should know, not only in Calabasas, but all of our services. Those Rachios are only $99, 89 sometimes when we run a sale, but they're installed for free. That is hundreds of dollars value for anyone who puts those Rachios in. And they definitely work. It's right on your phone. If you know it's going to rain, you can shut it off. If it's winter time, you can shut it off for whatever period of time. Or if you want to test your system, you can turn any one of them on. They take pictures so you can see all of what your landscape looks like. And Councilmember Trout, I'm glad you drank the water, not the Kool-Aid, so that's good. And there are landscape programs that we have that Craig Jones is facilitating where you can get some of those plants and change your your landscape instead of putting on some sort of fake grass. So also, as you said, customer service has gotten better. And I know that I was part of the outside until I got on the inside. And I will tell you that the staff of Las Virginas responds to everything. When there's a break, we are there 24 hours a day. You've seen some of the pictures in the acorn. It is not like some of the other utilities, I won't mention the cell phone companies. They really are responsive and I'm always here and everybody at the company is here. Call us and we'll respond to whatever happens.
Thank you so much for everyone being here. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Do we have any cards? If you can just state your name and your city of residence?
Yes, my name is Bill Ward.
Oh, if you, sorry, if you can come to the microphone.
My name is Bill Ward. I'm with Pump Pod USA. We make the Helopod. The subject matter that we're going to talk about here for about three minutes is wildfire mitigation. So just to give you an idea, I'll give everybody on the council and everything basically a copy of this brochure, which is?
I'm so sorry to interrupt. Are you speaking on the Las Virginas Municipal Water District presentation?
No.
Okay, then I'm going to call you back.
Oh, okay. Sorry, you said public comments.
Sorry, on this, on this item. Okay. But I will, but I'm excited for what's to come. Okay, now we're, what? Now we are going to move on to new business. We're, oh, let's see, Randy stepped out, so let's see. I'm going to go a little bit out of order. We will do council announcements first. Mayor Protem Kraut? Oh, wait, actually, never mind. I lied. Okay, Randy, you are up. Okay, so we are going to have consideration of approval of appointment of Randy Felish to the Environmental Commission. Are there any council questions or comments? Are there any members?
Great choice.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? May I have a motion to appoint Randy Felish to the Environmental Commission?
I'd like to make that appointment.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now I would like to administer the oath. And do we have a other? Oh, no, another microphone. I'll just do it from here. No, no, we're good. I'll just do it here. Okay, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Randy Felish.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duty.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon the duty of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's an honor and a privilege and I'll look forward to being an environmental commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, and we know you'll do a great job. Thank you for stepping up. Now, we're going to move on to council announcements and I will turn to Mayor Protem Kraut.
Okay. Just one quick announcement here, and that is that on June 6 at 11:30 AM till 1 o'clock at Founder's Hall, the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring a conversation with the Organized Crime, Retail Crime Task Force. The reason why this is so near and dear to my heart and important to our city is we've seen over the last many years, a lot of smash and grab and other organized crime, retail crime that goes often unreported. And a lot of times it goes unreported because people don't think it's worthwhile, worth their time to report it. They don't think it'll be prosecuted. They don't think anything will be done with it. And I invite you, especially our our business members in the community, to come join this conversation and learn about the great things that our law enforcement agencies have been doing on this front. And if you think about it, a year ago, all you could think about, all that was in the news was a smash and grab here and a smash and grab here. Can you recall one in the last six months? What happened? Well, if you want to find out what happened, again, it's going to be June 6 at 11:30 AM. It'll be here in Founder's Hall. I would reach out to the Chamber of Commerce at calabassachamber.com for more details and to register. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. James?
I do not have any, thank you.
Ed?
I have two items. One, I was pleasantly surprised, I picked it up, I think on Google, the California Public Utilities Commission proposes rejecting AT&amp;T's request to withdraw its carrier of last resort and initiates new rulemaking process. So I think all the work that everybody's done in our city and others certainly paid off. It was great news. And they're going to redo the rulemaking process. And then second and last item is Assemblymember Jackie Irwin and supervisor Lindsay Horvath are hosting a free, free session for Bee Safety Fair, June 8 from 8 to 1 PM at the Calabasas Community Center. It's great for kids, they're going to have little ponies there and a lot of the animals that they work with, as a fire chief is going to be there. Home hardening class, Sheriff Cito will be there, Captain Cito, and the director of the LA County Emergency Management, Kevin McGowan. So it would be a good opportunity to tighten up on safety around the home. That's it.
David?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate the chamber on a very successful event last week, the wine event, fundraising as well, as always. And congratulations to our staff and all our city and our city council for a great, great, grand opening of the sports courts just yesterday at Deansa Park. We have basketball, paddle, no paddle tennis, pickleball, shows how old I'm getting here. Pickleball and roller hockey, and it looks fantastic.
fantastic. It really was a great event. Couple quick congratulations to Calabasas High School and their students for, in the theater program, winning the prestigious awards known as the Jerry Herman Awards for theater all around Southern California. Those awards were at the Pantages Theater not too long ago, and also for the girls' track team, one of many great athletic teams at Calabasas High. But the girls' track team just qualified as one of the best teams in the state for the state track meet. So, congratulations and good luck to them. And in advance, because our next meeting is in June, to all the graduates who are graduating and culminating and their families. Last but not least, this Monday, we celebrate, and we get, all get a day off for Memorial Day. I would ask that we all remember all those who have given the ultimate sacrifice, so we can have the freedoms we so enjoy in this country. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing up Memorial Day. Just wanted to make sure that everyone in the community knows that unfortunately, there will not be fireworks this year at the high school. I know we've been talking about it a lot, but I keep getting a lot of questions from members of the public, so want to make sure that that is known. We will still have our daytime events, but unfortunately, this year, there will not be any fireworks, and we know how beloved Fourth of July is in the community. So, it's a great, the council staff, everyone's upset about that, but just this year, unfortunately, it will not work. Our first concert at the lake is June 2nd at six p.m. I can't believe that is right around the corner, so it looks like it's going to be a great one. I believe it's Grease. Yes, a tribute to Grease at six p.m. at the Calabasas Lake. And lastly, I want to bring up that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and our Mayor's Youth Council talks about this topic so openly and freely, and it's our hope that the rest of the community can talk about this, and that mental health gets just as much attention as physical health. For people that are having a mental health crisis, there is a number that you can text. It's nine-eight-eight instead of texting nine-one-one. This is a special hotline that deals specifically with mental health issues. For non-emergency numbers, if you don't have a primary care doctor and do need assistance, the L.A. County Department of Mental Health has a hotline that is open twenty-four-seven. I actually called it to test it, to make sure before I gave the information out to the community, that it was working and valid, and it is. So, L.A. County Department of Mental Health does have a twenty-four-seven hotline if people aren't able to get through to their own doctors and do need referrals. So, great resources out there. And in August, the Mayor's Youth Council is going to be doing a citywide essay contest, and the topic will be on mental health. So, we're hoping to get a lot of submissions. It's going to be open from elementary school all the way up to post-high school for adults as well. So, looking forward to that. Thank you. Now, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on non-agenda items? And Bill, I'm going to call on you first, since you are, you are ready.
Does my time start fresh?
Fresh.
I already showed you the flyer. Two things that I'm going to mention is, we are here, our product is here, to make your helicopters that are responding to the wildfires more efficient. So, there is a thing called cycle time, and that cycle time is from the time they dip the water and the time they put out the flames. The farther and farther they are, the more fuel they burn, the less amount of gallons of water they put on the fire per hour. So, that's why you want to have as many of these, at least five miles apart as possible. Basically, you've got two things that are there. It's also, it's, with this placement, it can also benefit and have the insurance companies try to look at and see a benefit of this, making the helicopters more efficient, and so on and so forth. This is community hardening. So, you guys just mentioned home hardening, defensive space around your home. What this does is harden the community, so when the QFR big Chinooks come along, or the Firehawks come along and dump the fire, it makes it a lot more efficient. News, two weeks ago, Valcitas Water put in their helipod. They were the first ones to use the SCADA system. We were just up at the Aqua Convention, and all the water agencies were just, our booth is probably in the top three most interested, and a lot of people showing up to that. So, to, and yesterday, the very first helipod was flown to be put and placed above JPL by L.A. County Fire. And then, today, Ventura County Fire took their, and their helipod and put it at Grimes, right there at Moore Park. So, kind of give you an idea of what's going on. We look forward to working with the board. We're basically going around to all the different water boards and water agencies and cities in what we call the Wildland Urban Interface, letting them know who we are. I know you guys have looked at and maybe know about a product called the Hella Hydrant, which is a permanent infrastructure-type product. Typically, they run between two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars each. Ours is anywhere from fifty to eighty-five-thousand. So, you can put five of ours in for the cost of one of theirs. And the reason I bring that up is because I will provide you quotes, handouts, and then I just need to know who I would follow up with in the city, if that would be the city manager, city council, or how we would do that, and how I would get information to you guys. So, I don't know the best way to do it. I know you guys can't respond.
No, you can do.
And I totally understand.
Mike Dyer, right there, raise your hand. That's your contact.
Perfect. That's exactly what I'm looking for tonight. So, thank you very much, and I think I did it within three minutes.
You're good.
Cool. Thanks for the time, guys.
Next up, I have Mike McNutt and Mark Levinson, both from the chamber. Not sure if it's together or separate, but you're both welcome to come up. Okay, you can both come up.
Hi, Mayor, and distinguished council. I'm Mike McNutt. I am the Chair of the Board for the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to go over something really quick with you all. I know that Mayor Protem had mentioned that we had a wine taste testing, or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Shapiro did, maybe both of you did. And anyways, we had a wonderful event this past Friday, and I wanted to give you a couple of just quick numbers. Thirty-one different local businesses, including six restaurants, were there. We had nearly two-hundred-and-fifty people that came. This was the highest-attended wine tasting event in its twenty-five-year history. There was different cool things. We had a silent auction that featured local businesses. There was a high-energy hair show. I did not participate. It was definitely a truly Calabasas event. One of the things that we're very proud of, and we've been focusing on as an organization, is to kind of bring the businesses and the people of Calabasas together, and this is an example of a success that we had in doing that. And we will continue to do that as we move forward. And I think that, the other thing I'd like to say is, I know that we collectively have a wonderful partnership together, again, with the city, that you invest in us, and we appreciate that, because we feel that investment in us is just an investment back into the community. And everything that we do moving forward is going to be focused on bringing people together and featuring the businesses here in our wonderful community of Calabasas. And the only other thing, this is what I know that Mayor Protem brought up, on June 6th, we are going to be having an organized retail crime task force event. We're very excited about that. We're really pushing and promoting it, so any help from Mike before he heads on out into the sunset to push that information out, we'd appreciate it very much. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and the wine event was really great.
First of all, some of the things I was going to say obviously were covered, but I would like to thank the city for partnering with us on the wine event and for partnering with us in helping put together the organization retail event. So, thank you for all your efforts in that part. And David and Peter, thank you again for your kind words. It wasn't easy to organize that event, but we think it's one that will certainly serve the public well. Two other quick things. One, every year, the United Chambers of Commerce has a small business breakfast, where each chamber is entitled to nominate and select one of their small businesses of the year. This year, Calabasas Chamber has selected a karate group, and they are new members, very active already, and they deserve to be honored. And thank you very much for your time and all the kind words we've heard about the chamber event. And David, you had a question?
Thanks, Mark.
You got it on your calendar, good man.
It'll be a busy birthday for David, Brian, Cameron. Oh, oh, number nine, item nine, sorry. Okay. So, no more public comment cards. Now, we're moving on to consent items. Are there any items that any of my colleagues wish to pull?
I need to pull item three for a quick correction.
Three?
And item four for a quick question.
Okay, let's start with three.
Thank you. On the first page of our agenda, it notes me as absent during our closed session. That's not technically correct. It stated better at the end of our agenda, I was recused for item number two, but I was present for the other items.
That's correct. That should be corrected.
Thank you.
Okay. Item four?
Thank you. I'll ask while you're coming up. The, this is a great, great report, nothing to do with that. Just asking if you could explain the timing of completion. These are the, referring to the resurfacing, and since I know Councilmember Albrecht and I have brought this up, to, to look, is there a possibility in the future, maybe it comes up under a future agenda item, to look at the resurfacing with the intent possibly of using Cool Streets project for the future, for 2025 and/or beyond?
Sure. Thanks, Councilmember, for the question. So, timing for completion, we are targeting to be complete before school starts in the fall. That's our goal.
That was the purpose of the question. Thank you on that.
And then for Cool Streets, Tatiana, take that.
We researched, we did some research on the Cool Street technologies, and the one we selected was a coating of the street with a lighted material that provides benefit for, for, you know, the temperature reduction. And although we did not include it in this year's resurfacing, but if you look at the next agenda item, SB 1 Resolution approval, we did include a part of the Parque Dupree that we're proposing to resurface. This year, we included that to coat, to make it a cool pavement, so we can compare the new asphalt with, with the cool technology and see what benefits it provides.
Fantastic. I didn't see that in the coating, but I should have, but I'm not an expert on the coating, but thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you. Ed, you had a question on number five?
No, it's been answered. It was in consent item number five, and I'm very excited because Dave, Councilman Shapiro brought this up to all of our attention originally, his work at SCAG, and it's going to be interesting to see, as a test street, how it really works. Does it make a big difference, rather than going into a big area? From what we've learned, it was done through, in Woodland Hills, to a wide area, and it was very successful, but we'll see for ourselves. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent items are approved. Now, we're going to go on to Continued Business, Public Meeting Regarding Landscape Maintenance District Number Twenty-Two and Landscape Lighting Act District Numbers Twenty-Two, Twenty-Four, Twenty-Seven, and Thirty-Two Assessment Proceedings. Heather Milton and Curtis Castle are here to present the report.
There's no report. This is when we take questions from any of the audience or residents?
Even better. Are there any council, council comments on this item?
I think this was a public hearing scheduled for public comment.
This is a public meeting.
Public meeting, not public hearing.
Public hearing would be a future meeting, but it would be helpful to verify on the record, Madam Mayor, there were no public comments.
No public comments, and there is no recommended action at this time. It's just a receive-and-file. Thank you so much. Now, we're moving on to adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1896, approving the funding agreement for four-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars with the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority for the city's zero-emission bus rollout project, and adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1897 to appropriate funds for this project. Curtis Castle and Treya are here to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, so I was here almost a year ago with my zero-emission bus rollout plan, and so this is kind of that, that next step. So, in 2019, CARB passed the Innovative Clean Transit Regulation, which is why we are now having to do this rollout plan, and it's requiring all public transit agencies to transition to our bus fleets to zero-emission technologies. Last June, staff presented, apologies. Last June, staff presented the CARB-required rollout plan to be approved by council. At that meeting, council, specifically Mayor Protem Kraut, asked about funding opportunities and what was available at the time, and staff responded that we'd been awarded four-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars. This is the funding agreement with Metro for that award. The city's rollout plan calls for two buses to be purchased every two years, which will allow staff to have a six-year leeway to ensure Calabasas fleet is one-hundred percent transitioned by the 2040 deadline. Assuming a fleet size of eight vehicles and staying on track, the city will be one-hundred percent electric after the 2034 procurement. The 2036 and 2038 procurements would be to replace the shuttles we are buying now, as they end their useful life term of twelve years, or in that, or in the event that we miss one of the planned procurements. This funding agreement now will allow staff to be on track to procure our first two electric shuttles in 2024, along with two chargers, which can be used for up to six shuttles due to the current nature of our routes. This purchase will also allow us to retire our current oldest shuttles, three and eleven. To note, while we may procure the shuttles this year, we may not receive the shuttles or chargers for two or three years due to current expected lead times. When applying for the grant, staff utilized the Metro-provided cost for the shuttles and fueling, but added a fifty-thousand-dollar contingency on the fueling, which was accepted by Metro. This created a total project cost of six-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars, six-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-eight dollars. Metro required a twenty percent match to the project, so in total, staff applied four and was awarded a rounded-up total of four-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars. The twenty percent match for the funds received from Metro will be covered by the state's hybrid and zero-emission truck and bus voucher project, also called HVIP, which will apply an automatic sixty-thousand-dollar voucher for each shuttle for a total of one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, and the remaining four thousand anticipated will come from propositions A and C, which are the local return funds that are currently used to operate the city's transit program. So, staff is requesting council approve Resolution 2024-1896 to approve this funding agreement, and Resolution 2024-1897 to appropriate the funding in the city's budget.
Are there any questions for Treya or comments? I'll start with Ed.
Treya, thank you for that. You know, in reading through this, it's really amazing how staff is put together, your staff that surrounds you in this, all the aspects of cobbling together the grants, making it happen. It's a long-range plan. The vehicles aren't going to be ready for a couple of years, but at least we're on the beginning, the precipice of it. And also, that the SCE is paying for the free assistance to put the machine, or at least planning the charging station. So, we're on our way. I really feel like we're on our way compared to where we were some time ago with broken-down shuttles, and now here we are, entering the new age, right on time. Thank you.
David?
I was just going to say, great report, very, very excited to see this and happy to vote and support it. And it looks like, if I heard you right, by 2026, hopefully, we'll have four buses in place at that point, if everything goes well. And I was going to congratulate you, everybody who was involved in preparing and getting this grants. I presume you had a lot to do with that. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. Thank you.
That's, that's a big item. It really is. It's something that helps our city, helps our, we're about to talk about the budget, helps our finances, and helps the community. And this is something we brought forward and council wanted very much, and you said we could do it, and here we are. So, thank you, and thank all staff, and it's fantastic. And Metro, thanks to Metro as well.
Peter?
Yeah, I've got to echo that. Public Works always has had a great history of doing this, and Treya, fantastic job. Hey, I found a half a million dollars. How often do you hear that, right? So, thank you. I do have one question. Great report, great program. Just for clarity, in the middle of the staff report, it says the city owned fifteen, at the time of the application, the city owned fifteen shuttles, five of which were inoperable due to the age and mileage. Could you share with us, how many shuttles do we need and have and continue to operate, and what happened to the other five?
So, two of them are still inoperable. Three of them have since been sold, which did come to council a few months ago by Michael McConville. Other than that, so, I'm going based on requiring eight shuttles to be, to have on hand at all times. We currently have five routes, and so, having eight would provide the five routes plus the trolley. We still like our electric trolley. We're going to turn it electric, hopefully. So, that makes six vehicles, and then plus two for backups for maintenance, for if a shuttle goes down for any reason. Fueling, switching out too, we're still unsure about how that's going to work, so there's a potential that one shuttle goes in to start charging. It's going to be a few hours, so another one comes out.
Great, great plan. And the two that are still inoperable, is the plan to sell those or to save them for parts, or what?
Correct. The plan is to sell them.
We're going to sell them. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
James?
No, thank you.
And I just had two quick comments. Congratulations. This is really amazing work, and to secure that amount of money on such a forward-thinking project is, we really commend you on that. And I also really appreciate both of you being honest about the lead time. Sometimes, like, we get so excited about a project, and then we expect to see them in the lot, like, next week. So, appreciate the honesty. I think that's really helpful for the community to understand as well. So, thank you so much. And now, let's make a motion to approve, approval of Resolution 2024-1896 to approve the funding agreement for four-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars with Metro, and approval of Resolution 2024-1897 to appropriate the funding for the project. Is there... Is there?
I would like to make a motion to approve both resolutions.
And I'll second those.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you. Do you guys want to take a little break and then we can just go straight through with the budget? Okay. Let's do 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Great. And we are back to discuss our recommended budget for fiscal year 2024 to 2025. Our CFO, Ron Allers, is going to present the presentation and review of the city manager's recommended budget for this fiscal year.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we are going to begin our first meeting on the budget presentation for fiscal year 2425. We are actually going to be splitting duties, myself and the city manager, so I will let Kendon kick us off.
Thank you, Ron. Mayor, council members, it's a privilege to be with you tonight and talk about this upcoming fiscal year budget. And foremost, and first of all, we'd like to express appreciation to our budget task force, Mayor Pro Tem Kraut, and Councilmember Shapiro for a number of meetings that have led up to this point. There's a lot of work that goes into the budget presentation, both at the task force level and then with our finance staff and with each of our departments and directors as they look through those numbers and make sure that they're not only accurate, but reflect the costs that are going forward to provide those services to our community. I'll start out, Mayor, with a few of the slides, and I'll go through several of those, and then some of the slides Ron and I will split as we talk about different principles and, and ideas and concepts. And at the end, we're happy to answer any questions and, and go from there at that point. As council is aware, and as I've mentioned in several different presentations, the budget each year is the council's fiscal policy, and it's the opportunity for the city council as a policymaking board to prioritize what's most important going forward in that next year. Now, from time to time throughout the year, we, the, the city council will approve contracts or amendments to contracts, or in, like we just saw, the, a resolution for grant funding. Each of those have financial implications, but overall, they become, they become tied in or part of the overall budget and operating expenses of the city. And one of the things that this council has been very mindful over, mindful of is fiscal resiliency. And, and it was adopted, this principle was adopted as one of our strategic priorities in 2022. And I think there's a slight nuance or a difference when we talk about fiscal resiliency and fiscal sustainability. A fiscal sustainable, fiscally sustainable community or city is, is able to make its payments and go forward and, and provide basic services. A fiscal, fiscally resilient city is able to offer so much more, and I think that's the difference of what we're talking about as we look forward, is we don't want to be a city that each year is looking at a budget that is barely in the, in the black. We want to be able to plan forward for those programs, services, projects, and initiatives that are for the, meet the needs of the community. And I think, and so with this, I want to highlight a couple of things. Over the last few years, for two years consecutively, the city experienced a wonderful windfall of sales tax revenues. The two years, and we'll look at those a little bit more in more detail, provided us with excess revenues anticipated over the budget. It's unique that cities have this opportunity, and, and Calabasas had this, these high sales tax years, and because of that fiscal resiliency mindset, the council chose to do some wonderful things. And let me highlight those. So for one, for example, last year, we increased funding for public safety, one of those being our deputy, Di Matteo, who's our community liaison officer, we were able to secure him as a full-time deputy for our community in addition to some other minutes for patrol. The city fronted over a million dollars to improve city recreational facilities. Most of that went towards the community center. Again, some of that will be recovered through grants and so forth. A lot of it was delayed operational costs that we transferred over into capital, and we're able to do it there. The city set aside $2 million for deferred maintenance as we look ahead for projects that we need to, to cover. The city invested $2 million into a section 115 trust account. That account draws interest and, and is growing, so it will allow us to pay future pension liabilities. And then one of the things that the budget task force promoted and was able to have the council approve was a general fund policy, reserve policy of 50%. What that means is that at any given time, there's a policy by the council that we will maintain in our general fund reserves, half of what our normal operating budget is throughout a year. So that is to be used in rainy days, it's to be used to protect the city against unforeseen events, whatever that might be. But again, kudos to the council for these different initiatives over the last few years that show that fiscal resiliency going forward. This, this shows our sales tax history, and Ron will go into this a little bit more. I just wanted to show those years beginning in 2021 and then ending in 2023, where we saw that spike in our sales tax, and now seeing it drop off in 23, 24. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the sales tax revenue is declining over the last four quarters, so up from that peak, we've seen it drop over the last year. Other general fund revenues are increasing. However, that growth is incremental. We're not seeing that, that growth move as fast as expenses are moving. And then finally, our general, as I mentioned, general, general fund expenses are outpacing revenue projections. Here's a, a slide that Ron worked on, and I appreciate his effort in this. What we're trying to do here is something that we haven't done in previous budgets, is to really look at the four, 10 years. And so what Ron did is he looked at historically some of our revenues and our expenses, and from there projected, based on different assumptions, and he can talk more about those later on, what we see happening in the next 10 years. So if you look at where we're at right now in 2024, 25, we're at a point where our, and this was similar to our, our budget last year, we're at a point where our budget, our revenues and our expenses are on par. They're, they're in line with each other. If you remember, last year, the budget that was approved by the council was, again, a balanced budget, but was only balanced and in positive by just a few thousand dollars. This year, similarly, again, a balanced budget, and we'll talk more about that, but at a point where we see expenses outpacing over the next few years revenues. Now, I met with several of our residents, and they provided some good insight under this, and then a question from the mayor led me to, led, leads to the need to clarify some things. So as we put together this projection, looking out for the next 10 years, there's some things that are not included in here. So for example, we know that the council in December approved the Caruso project that will bring new retail and commercial opportunities to the city. We have a Kia dealership that is looking to put in a, a location here in, in our community. That's not factored in. And, and the reason, and then we're also looking at annexing the Craftsman's Corner. That's been something in a work in progress, which will bring some additional revenues and sales tax there. That's not factored in here. And, and the reason is, is we just don't know when those are going to happen. And some of those could happen this year, some could happen next year, some may be delayed four, or five, or six years. And so those aren't in there. Again, we will see an uptick in revenues because of those approvals and, and projects that come forward. We just don't know when those are going to happen. So those aren't factored in. One of the other things I wanted to point out is, and I appreciate the mayor bringing this to my attention, is in the staff report, you have a spreadsheet that shows a list of initiatives and projects that have either been requested by the council or that we have identified as needs for our different facilities or different assets, where we need to make improvements and repairs. That list in your, in your, in your, included with your staff, staff report is not included in these projections. And let me be clear on that. So what that means is those list of projects or those initiatives aren't factored into this. So if we were to add those costs into that, the gap between the revenues and the expenses would widen. And so I just want to be clear on that. I think the way I worded it in the staff report, it wasn't as clear, so I appreciate the mayor bringing that to my attention. But again, if you look at that staff report and that appendix that shows about 15 and a half million dollars in one-time cost, and about 2.7 million dollars in ongoing cost, those are not factored into this projection. So again, if we were to put that in, the gap between our revenues and expenses grows substantially over the next 10 years if we, as we start to address those repairs and capital improvements, or if the council wants to add any services, initiatives, projects to, to the budget. So I wanted to clear that up, and, and we can come back to that if we need to. Next slide, please. At the March 27 meeting, the council directed staff to look at additional outreach and education regarding a potential sales tax initiative. That is happening, and the survey firm, FM3, that we've worked with in the past, will be doing another community survey in the next few weeks. We'll be coming back with those results to the council in June. What is being asked in that, that survey is the community's interest in a 0.75% transaction in use tax or a sales tax add-on. And this would generate about $4 million per year in new revenues. That $4 million, that number is coming from HDL, our sales tax consultants. And so really, what they look at is what we bring in now and what that sales tax add-on would bring in if it was, again, approved by the voters. So that is, that number is coming from our consultant. It's a, a number based on their, their studies of our sales tax revenues and the different sources and what they see happening with that, just that additional sales tax. And again, we'll be coming forward in June with more information on that. And now we'd like to move into our general fund revenues, and here I'm going to have, Ron, take over and share some of these slides, and then I will interject with some other ones. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Kendon. General fund revenues for next year are added up to be about 28.8 million. I'll quickly go through a, the few large revenues that the general fund receives. Sales tax, as the council is aware, our sales tax has been decreasing the last four quarters. So last year, we received eight and a half million, as you see here on the slide. This year, we are estimating 7.5 million, so decent size reduction in one year. Next year, we are forecasting an increase, a minimal increase, up to 7.8 million. Sales tax, again, is 1% of all of the taxable sales that occur within the city of Calabasas boundaries. Next is property tax. Property tax, the city receives 4.7 cents on the dollar. So for example, a million-dollar home pays $10,000 a year in property taxes. Of that $10,000 that they write a check to LA County for, the city receives $470 out of $10,000. That's what this 4.7 represents. This is a very stable revenue source, as you can see here. It increases basically every year, and that's due to Prop 13, and we're looking to continue with these increases, and we're about at four and a half million dollars. Transit occupancy tax, the city has four hotels, and this 12% tax on the people that occupy those hotel rooms generates these amount of dollars, about 2.7 million dollars, 2.7, a little bit more next year. Everybody can see the, the graph and, and what happened during the shutdowns that began in March of 2020, and then coming back out of the shutdown and business travel coming back as well as vacation travel. Utility users tax, the city has UUT on three different utilities, electric, natural gas, and telephone. The electric has, used to be a really stable source of revenue and now has been increasing as Southern California Edison has been increasing their rates, and this is a 5% tax on that revenue generated. So again, a little over $2 million. For natural gas, the same scenario where natural gas prices have been increasing, and now we're up at 800,000. And then telephone is kind of the opposite as the culture, the environment has gone away from landline phones, and people don't even have landline phones now, at least the younger generation. Some of us that are older still have them, but this revenue source used to be over $1 million and is now at 600 to 650,000. And we're seeing that basically stay stable going forward. Building fees, so these are all our planning fees, our building and safety fees, engineering fees that deal with the new construction, add-ons can be commercial, can be residential. We're looking at $2 million for this year and for next year. You can see how that fluctuates also with the economy and also with whatever major projects may be going on in the, in the city, whether it be a, a new hotel or a car dealership going in. Vehicle license fee is kind of a misnomer. That was the original source. That was 20-plus years ago. This is actually property tax-based, and therefore it increases along the same line as our normal property tax revenue, generates about $3 million a year, and is just steadily increasing by about 3% a year, give or take. So this is our general fund revenues shown in a, a simple donut chart. Sales tax is our, is our number one. And next is property tax, and then utility users tax. And on down, where we went through the, the major categories, you can see the, the last gray section in the upper left-hand corner is all the other revenues in the general fund. Those other revenues are literally 50, 60, 70 different items, nothing of substance to go over individually, and, and that's why they're combined together. Next, we'll go over just a few general fund expenses. Again, our general fund expenses equal our revenues, about 28.8 million for next year's budget. Major expense, number one expense, is our LA County Sheriff contract, about five and a half million dollars. And you can see the increases for this year and for next year that is coming from the county. As a, as a reminder, we also have some grant revenue that comes flowing in from the state, about $150,000 a year, that we are committed to spend on our sheriff contracts, and that's coming down from the state. So that's about 150 grand. So this isn't our total LA County Sheriff contract because we have a, a little grant that pays for a portion of this every year. Our CJPIA insurances, this is our general liability, our workers' comp, our property insurance, our crime insurance, so forth. Again, large increases. We were kind of stable for five or six years, and now we're seeing large increases, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. And this is going on in the industry as a whole. We are all used to this. If we've received our property insurance bill within the last year, or if we've received our car insurance as well, insurances are going up across the board, specifically within the state of California, and we are not immune to those increases. Salary and benefits of about $10 million to $11 million a year in the, in the general fund. You'll notice that we had some decreased actual expenses, actual expenses, excuse me, in '21 and in '22. That was due to vacancies, and council, I think, is well aware of all the vacancies that the, that the city has had, and we are now having less vacancies than we've had in years past, hence the increase in the actuals, but also we budget at full staffing. We budget for every position for full 12 months that is going on. And I'll just give you an example. We have a recent vacancy in our city clerk position. We're currently recruiting for that, and hopefully that will be filled sometime this summer, but that's budgeted at a full 12 months, and we'll see if we get an actual person in there for the city clerk for that full 12 months or not. But those are the vacancies that always happen each and every year.
And Ron? Yeah. If you can stay on that slide for just a second. So council, I want to talk about this slide because of some of the questions that have come from you as the council, and to really look at where we are trending in regards to our employees. So as the staff report mentions, we are adding four new full-time positions. So as the staff report mentions, we are adding four new full-time positions as part of this budget. Let me talk about those a little bit. It wasn't clear in the staff report, and that was our fault. And so let me clarify one, a few of those. So with those positions, we are adding an assistant city manager, which is already hired, started, you know, this current fiscal year. So it wasn't in last year's budget, but it is being put in next year's budget. We've created a management specialist position. That's a new position. We have a receptionist position. That person has been here at City Hall for two years, but has been through a temp agency. So we're now picking up that person, but paying now the retirement and other benefits, insurance and other benefits associated. So we've been paying a base salary for that, but now has come on as a full-time employee. And then we also have a, a position in our landscape lighting assessment district fund that went from a part-time to a full-time position. So again, we didn't have that full-time position in the budget previously. It is now a, a full-time position. We're also seeing that offset by some retirements that are coming up and some other changes. So for example, Mr. Russo is retiring, and that position is not going to be filled at, filled at this time. And so that is a savings to those four positions that we are bringing on. Big picture, I just want to talk about some things. So if we go back historically to about 2010, 2011, the city had about 108 full-time employees. So that's going back 12, 13 years, 108 full-time employees. With this upcoming budget, we'll have 85. So again, over that 10-year period, you see both a, a decline in personnel by vacancies, retirements, whatever that might be, while also an uptick recently. Over that period of time, we've averaged 91 full-time employees. So even at the 85, we're less than what our average has been over that time. So again, a peak of about 108 full-time employees historically, again, and that was in 2010, 11, down to what is being proposed with the 85. But I think it's important to know what's happened, or notice, take note of what's happened also in that last 10 years. So not only are we operating with less staff, we're actually doing more. So if you think about a senior center that has been added in that 10-year period, now a community center that is being added. And so we've added two significant facilities, and are staffing those with full-time bodies. In addition to a number of other things, passport agency, a mayor's youth council, community services programs, those are all things, new additions that, that we haven't been doing over these last 10 years, we're augmenting or increasing with the same number of staff or less. So in essence, we are doing more with those 85 employees than we were previously with higher number of employees. So I just wanted to touch on that, because I know those questions that come up, and we can come back to that as well. Thank you, Ron.
We also break out our general fund expenses in this donut chart. You'll notice that police is, is the largest segment here. Next up is kind of a multitude of departments, the media, information technology, finance, human resources on the other, on the other side of the donut. But you can see the comparison between the departments, be it public works, community development, parks and rec, and so forth, that are broken out here for just the general fund expenses. Again, this totals up to 28.8 million. General fund overview, as I've, as I've already mentioned a couple times, here's a little bit of history. We have two years' worth of actual. So if you notice on the far left, fiscal year '21, '22, and almost down at the bottom, you see surplus deficit. We actually ended the year in the black, 1.2 million, 1,246. The following year, '22, '23, we ended the year also in the black with a surplus of almost 2.3 million. This year, we adopted a budget that was balanced. It had a little bit extra in, 179,000. We're looking at this point to still be in the black, about 40,000. And next year's proposed budget that council has before them tonight is balanced for the general fund, and it is forecasted at $102,000 for, for surplus in the general fund. Another way to break it out is to put the expenses and the revenues side by side in, in a bar chart. And what we're trying to do here is do some comparisons on what, what items are actually paying for what. They're not linked in anywhere, they're not linked legally or anything like that, but we're just trying to do a comparison. So if you notice on the left-hand bar chart, the bottom is labeled "property tax," and on the expenses, the bottom is labeled "police," it's the same color. You can see that all our property tax dollars that the city receives in the general fund does not even pay for the LA County Sheriff's contract. And that's just a fact. That's just the way it is. So it takes all of our property tax and a little bit of our sales tax just to pay our sheriff's contract. And if you go up a little bit, and you go to the planning and building fees, you can see that's in the third bar up on the revenue side, planning and building fees versus the planning and building and safety expenses on the other side. You can see that the fees are probably 40% of the actual expenses for that department. Again, just trying to line up revenues and expenses so that you can, that you can see what different things actually can pay for or not.
And Ron, if I could add to that. So just in, in real dollar numbers, if you go back to the slide, and you don't have to do that right now, if you go back to our property tax revenues, that's about $4.8 million in revenues. And our sheriff's contract is about $5.8 million in revenues. So $1 million more for our sheriff, sheriff's contract than what we bring in, in the property tax revenues. So those are just the hard numbers on that.
Again, the general fund is, is balanced, and we actually have a surplus of $100,000. Our sheriff staffing levels remain unchanged from this current fiscal year, and our programs and, and services are consistent with this current year, as well as what the city is providing. And as Kendon mentioned, we do have a brand-new community center that we are, we are funding, and it's up, and it's operational, and that was fit into this budget that was not there previously. The general fund does not include the following, as Kendon mentioned, 4.6 million in public safety and emergency preparedness initiatives, about 6.7 million in park and recreation facility repairs, 3.9 million in infrastructure and other capital improvements, and 2.2 million in city projects, operational needs, so forth. Those are the ongoing costs. These are not included in, in this budget.
And Ron, let me touch on that if I can. So these numbers tie back into that spreadsheet included in your packet. And so, for example, if we, we've heard from the council, there's a desire to have increased security at City Hall and other city facilities. That's not in the budget. If we wanted to do private security to, to patrol open space, that's not in the budget. Earthquake insurance is not in the budget. And then there's a whole list, 6.7 million dollars in park and recreational facility repairs that need to happen. So in essence, what we're doing is we're just kicking the can down the road. There's needs that, there's repairs that need to happen. We're not funding those this year, so at some point, we're going to have to fund them. There are several in there that we might come back in, in a future meeting and say, "We couldn't wait until next year. It has to happen now." But I just wanted to tie those two together. So what you see here is the summary of what's in your staff report, but those are not included in this, this upcoming budget.
Here's our citywide budget overview. So this is the general fund, along with every single fund here in the city. So this includes the library fund, the tennis and swim center fund, all of our landscape maintenance district funds, our gas tax fund, all of our transit funds, be that Proposition A, C, Measure R, Measure M. Every fund in the city, here it is in one chart, citywide. You'll notice actuels for '21, '22, and '22, '23. Again, we ended with surpluses in those years. Revised estimate for this year, we're going to be in a surplus position as well. Next year's proposed budget, you'll notice that it has 1.1 million, and that is in a use of reserves, and that is basically to fund our capital programs that need to be funded next year. Specifically, I can, I can mention tennis and swim. We have a roof repair that's well over $1 million in tennis and swim. We have appliances that we're looking for the kitchen to replace in tennis and swim. We have our other equipment for physical fitness to replace in tennis and swim, as well as other capital needs, capital projects at, at tennis and swim, that go well above this $1 million. So that, so while this is in the red, if you will, 1.1 million, it is using those reserves to fund those specific capital needs that we see as, as required in next year, just because of, of looking at the facilities.
And on, on this item too, one of the things that the council is aware is we are looking at a solar project energy retrofit. So again, that hasn't come to council yet, but if, if and when it doesn't, and if it's approved by council, that would include the tennis and swim center roof, the electrical panel at the tennis and swim center, the HVAC systems at the tennis and swim center. Those are all big-ticket costs. And so if approved by council, what that would do is, it is, what's being proposed is the, is that the energy savings from those solar projects and the energy retrofit would pay for a loan to cover the cost of those capital improvements. So instead of having that 1.1 million there as a deficit for this year, we would see that as a much smaller number, as we just really, in essence, pay, make a loan payment to do that project. Again, we're expecting that to come in, if not in June, early August, for the council to consider.
Future budget meetings on June 19th. We anticipate coming back to council and to, in effect, adopt the entire budget. That would be our salary resolution, which we do every year, which would include a cost of living adjustment for the full-time staff. We would come with a city, citywide fees resolution. We need to add a few more fees to this, specifically dealing with the new community center that just opened. We will have our public hearing on the budget for fiscal year '24, '25, and adopt the operating budget, the capital improvement budget, and then the appropriations limit. If need be, and we don't adopt the budget on June 19th, we, we can come back on June 26 and adopt whatever needs to be adopted, based on changes, whatever happens on, on June 19th, so that the budget is officially approved before we start the fiscal year on, on July 1st. With that, we are available for any and all questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron and Kendon. I'd like to start with our budget subcommittee. They've done so much work on this as well, with Ron and Kendon. So Peter, do you want to start?
Okay. Thank you, your mayor pro tem. All right. First of all, Ron, thank you very much for this very thorough report. And Ron Kendon, Mayor Pro Tem Kraut, thank you for the hard work. We spent a great number of hours going through this. This wasn't, this wasn't what we saw the first time, second time, what we discussed even the third time. This has really been worked on, and we talked about it. For us now, it's, we're not alone. We have to tighten our belts a little bit now, and in the future, to come up with this type of budget going forward. We talk about, and I'm, I've become somewhat more conservative on this, on this committee than, than you might otherwise think, but the state and the federal funds have certainly, and are diminishing based upon their budget situations. The state budget, I know, is in, and I'm talking about grants or funding that we might otherwise have easy access to, which is not going to, which is something we cannot count on, and we're not putting in here right now. The state budget, I know, is anticipated for large deficit for a number of years now. So, so they're cutting back drastically. We are in a much, much, much better situation than, than frankly, the state and most cities that I'm aware of. So I'm very proud of our city for that. We talked about it as a committee. The only two things we can do to make the budget better for the city is either to increase our revenue sources, or decrease expenses, or a combination of, of both. And we tried to do that to the best of our ability. Those are the only two things that we can do. And as some of our top sources, as you pointed out, of revenue for sales tax include TOT for hotels and our auto sales, and, and those are doing well, and we anticipate they're hopefully going to do better. But there's a lot there. And while we've done our best, and I'm really appreciative that we are providing, and I, I do support a balanced budget, which we have, we have a little bit better than a balanced budget, but that is very important to all of us up here. I know that, that we're looking at the future, and what we can do as a council, and what we can do as a city. Few questions on this for you. The, the building fees and, and funds you have in there, was Caruso included in those two numbers for the next year, year and a half or two, or not at this point?
Not at this point.
Okay. And the sheriff's contract goes up, so is the JPIA, according to those charts. So we, we can anticipate those going up somewhere, well, the sheriff's 5% to 10%, depending on what the numbers are, inclusive of the JPIA?
Yeah, so the, so the JP, the JPIA, we actually, those are solid numbers, what you have there, because they have already notified us a few weeks ago of what the actual dollar amounts are, and we pay those by July 15th every year. The sheriff's contract, they notify, they updated us on the increase in their percentage like two weeks ago or three weeks ago, and it went up to 3.4, if my memory is right.
Okay. So between the two, do you figure it's about 5% between JPIA and the sheriff's contract of increase, or?
No, the, the JPIA contract, that's almost a 20% increase, because it's a $200,000 increase.
Okay. Just to, for the public, I, I mean, I know these numbers. The salary and benefits page, which you have there, that includes anticipated for expenses, salary and benefits for next year, includes COLA, anticipated COLA numbers, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the, well, I'll skip that one. The, the general fund overview bars, the bars. Now, if you were to take, this is a little funny joke, maybe. If you were to take the city council out of that, would we be, wouldn't we be less than emergency preparedness on that bar chart?
Yes, you would be smaller than the emergency preparedness if we would call out city council.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you for doing your part, council.
Yes.
We appreciate that.
We're trying to help with the budget. And then the general fund, which you had also, the, the 6.7 million, talking about the things that are not included, and we've talked about those, and I'm sure we're going to talk about them up here tonight. The 6.7 million for the parks and, and, and facilities, that does not include any available funds left from ARPA or any grants at this time, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to clarify that. And again, we've gone over this. Our goal, and what we have to do, and what we have to recommend, is a balanced budget. But looking forward, even without the graphs, but based on the trends, and the sales tax numbers being down, as you mentioned, four quarters in a row, is a sign to me that we have to be very prudent, cautious, and find a way to increase our revenue stream, or increase the revenue, so we can do, we can have the funds to absolutely do the things that we need to do for our structures in the city, for safety, for public safety, for emergency preparedness, and to continue to provide services that our community wants. So as long as we can do that by either, hopefully, an increase of revenue somehow, some way, we won't have to immediately look at some potentially drastic cuts to expenses. Thank you very much. That's my comments.
Thank you, David. Peter?
Yeah, thank you. So just want to circle back to a few items. First of all, we do have a resolution here that we maintain a reserve of at least 50% of our general fund. So a $28 million general fund, we need to keep at least 14 million above and beyond this year's budget, and we have more than that. We have actually a 1.95 million more than that 50% right now. So that actually puts us in a good financial position, and that's based on some really good decisions that we've made over the last several years. Frankly, it's based on a little bit of luck with ARPA funds and, and other revenue sources that we wouldn't normally have counted on. And so that put us in a good position. I, I do think we're, we're solid here, and I want to assure everybody of this. When we look at budgeting and shortfalls and, and, you know, events, we look at a catastrophic event that might happen. And so, for example, if you're a community that's dependent upon the railroads, and the railroads go out, you're going to have a, a big drop in funds. Well, we're a community that's pretty dependent on auto sales. We're, we're also dependent on our sales tax. Certainly, a drastic drop in property tax could certainly do something to us, but fortunately, Prop 13, where our property tax, our property values are locked in. where our property tax, our property values are locked in or very securely locked in. So it's, the change in property taxes that we see are based on sales of homes. The homes that people hang on to, that revenue is pretty constant. So when we look at one, maybe even two catastrophic events in the economy, you know, there's really nothing that's going to take us beyond 50% of our general reserve, general fund reserve. So the reason I'm setting the stage for that is, you know, we do have a balanced budget here. We have a lot of requests for other things above and beyond that budget. And we could dip into a little bit of that money. And sometimes, like for example, we saw a slide earlier that had a red number on it. And red numbers are scary. Red numbers means that we're spending more than we're taking in. But we've had a few black, solid black numbers for the last couple of years. And what have we done? We've decided to reinvest that money in the community by spending on parks and stuff. And that's why we see a red number in the overall budget, although it's not in the general fund. I do want to tell the community as well that we have, we've asked for and are in the process of getting two fee studies, one for planning and building and safety to cover our fees. What we want to know is the cost that it takes somebody to build something, is all of that being the cost that it costs a city for city staff time and city expenses, are we recouping all of that in the form of fees? So we're doing a fee study right now to make sure that we're not unintentionally paying for the development of others' real estate. We're also looking at a fee study for recreation. You know, one of the things that we've run into recently here is the HVAC systems for the Tennyson Swim Center are old and obsolete and in need of replacement. And, you know, we're dealing with that right now, but it's a sad fact that we didn't see that coming 30 years ago. Because buildings get old and roofs only last so long and HVAC equipment breaks down. So we need to start budgeting for this for the future. So I applaud this council in that the last few years, we started tucking some money aside just for, for things like that. And we're going to be continuing to plan for the future. But meanwhile, we need to recognize that the city is not self-sufficient in that regard. And we do need to plan for the future there. I do appreciate the comments on salaries. And Ron, I'm going to give you a couple of hard questions if I can. It was mentioned that the receptionist is not, was a temporary employee, a contract employee, I assume from Apple One?
Correct.
Which puts it in the line item of 10-311, Administration and Engineering Contractual Services. This would be on page 51 of 210. So I was expecting that number to go down, but it didn't. It went up from 80,000 to 120. If we got rid of an Apple One employee, how come that number went up?
Are you looking at?
I'm looking at contractual services under Administration and Engineering, 10-311.
Administration and Engineering as Public Works.
Okay. And so which, which one would this Apple One employee have come out of? Because I don't see any of them that have a significant decrease.
It should be out of the, either this, I believe out of the city clerk's budget or out of the administration budget. Let me see which one. Yeah, it is out of the city clerk budget. If you would look at page 18 of 210, that's in the budget. The city clerk budget, we had actual expenses last year of 73,000. This year, we're looking at 54, and next year at the same dollar amount, the 55,000. So that's taking the expenses that we were paying for contractual services to Apple One, and it gets, it's being reduced.
Ooh, but I would have figured a much bigger reduction if we've taken an entire employee off there. I hope she got paid more than 20,000 a year.
Yeah, she did get paid more than, more than $20,000 a year. But it would also be, I would have to take a look and, and see what was not paid in last year as well for that. And I can, I can get that for you, council member.
All right. If we do continue this item tonight, I would ask that we take a look at that and, and going back and looking at the other contractual services. When we take the LA County Sheriff out, contractual services go up 37% across the board, which again, is just baffling to me. So I'm going to ask you to take a hard look at some of those and see if there's other areas where we can save. I do appreciate the city manager's explanation of the number of employees that have been reduced. And certainly the flatline graph of our staff that you had in the presentation really tells the story. The story is that over the course of seven years, the total salaries only went up 9%, which is, you know, a little less than 1 and 1/4% every year. So it's obvious that we're, we're now catching up to a savings that we've been enjoying for the last eight or nine years. So I do appreciate the feedback on that, but I'm certainly looking for every dollar we can find here. The last item I want to touch on is on the revenue side. We got a recent sales tax chart showing what our Q3 sales tax is. It looks like we did, it's actually not in the presentation, the quarterly sales tax chart that you shared with us. Just the numbers were that we did 1.9 million in the first quarter, 2 million in the second, 2 million in the third. And from looking at this chart, I'm believing we're going to be at 1.8 million next year. Putting those together, that gets us to a 7.7 million, not 7.8 million in sales tax. So I think there might be a $100,000 adjustment, unfortunately downward in revenues that we need to look at based on the sales tax chart that we saw this morning, which puts us a little bit more into the red. Again, I'm not really too, too worried about that simply because we do have an excess reserve well above our 50%. So there's room for a little bit of cushion here. But that's where we're at right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. James?
Yes, thank you. I have a few. Regarding the sales tax numbers, I just wanted to point out that we did receive a bit, I think, of an artificial boost. We were one of only eight cities in LA County during the COVID-19 pandemic that where sales tax went up. And there were 80 cities in LA County where it went down. So I think that explains a little bit why our numbers are coming down to what they probably should have been or would have been without, without the pandemic. I'm not exactly sure why our numbers were so good during the pandemic, but they, I think they were artificially high. On the property taxes slide, I thought, are, we get 4.17 cents, not 4.7.
I can double check that, council member. I'm confident in my 4.7, but I, let me double check and I'll send you that, that chart that shows the breakout
Yeah.
of the actual, actual percentages.
And I just want to point out to the public, one of the struggles we've had is, and we've talked about it up here before, is that because we're the last city that was incorporated in LA County, it was a take it or leave it. So if you're an older city that was incorporated in the 1800s, you're, they're getting like 25% property tax revenue. And we're getting just a small fraction of that, as you can see. I wondered to our city attorney, I know there had been some, a bill that was presented a couple of years ago to equalize property tax revenues. And I know that like half the cities that were below the median were for it, and half the cities that were above the median were against it.
Precisely matching that line.
What, what, has any action been proposed or done in that area since that bill was shelved?
No, since that one died a couple of years back, I'm not aware of any legislative push to equalize it within the cities.
Is there?
It's a zero sum game between the cities and the county. And so there's not been, it hasn't moved forward of recent, not that we couldn't try to move it forward with our partners.
Well.
Similarly situated.
Yeah, it would be half and half again. But I had a related question to you on that. Has any city ever challenged the inequities in that kind of thing? Because it seems to me there's an equal protection argument. We're pretty much providing the same services as a city that gets 25% of its revenue, of property tax revenue. Has anybody ever
I'm not aware of anybody
asked for legal remedy?
Yeah, I'm not aware of anybody having, any city having filed that lawsuit or pursued that as a claim against the county under LAFCO. At least off the top of my head, I'm in Ottawa, where somebody tried that. It's certainly worth an assessment.
Has any city ever renegotiated its property tax revenue?
As each annexation comes up, yes. But I've never seen a city succeed in renegotiating its existing revenue from, especially one incorporated in our era.
Okay. I think it's very unfair. And if there was a way to change it, that would drastically alter our, our run revenue sources, of course. With regard to your comment about the annexation of Craftsman's Corner, I do think, you know, for what it's worth, we ought to at least consider that in the background. And I believe at this point, it's a plus, it's a net half a million dollars at least that we would be gaining annually from that, even if you subtract out all the costs of maintaining the new things. So I'd like, can staff, I don't want to put staff to too much work, but our numbers that we received are quite old regarding the estimated net revenue. Could we get an estimate?
So we can look at that. I know that, I know that community development has already been looking at that on some things. We'll come back with that and on where we're at.
Like things have changed over there. This, this estimate was given, for example, before Belmont Village was over there. I mean, that's how old it was. So things over there have changed a bit. And, you know, I don't, I don't think we can project exactly what we're going to be required to do, like, you know, what new projects might come over there. But we can certainly look at what is there now and what they're getting. And I'm kind of curious what the, what the numbers are, because I do think that'll be an important source of revenue. All right. I would note, and I'm not opposed to the utility tax, but it, it does trouble me a little bit that the state or the utilities are gouging people and then we're getting money on top of that. That is somewhat troubling to me. And I, I wish there were a way, I hope that utilities are advertising properly, for example, the low income benefits, the reduction in the, in the bills. Can we, when we talk to the utility providers, I want to make sure they do that and do not, they're not lax on that here, because people are struggling with their utilities. On the phones, I remember that we had some gray area period where we had not, our ordinance was not that clear on whether it applied to cell phones. But Matt, from your comments, it seemed to me that you, you don't think that it does apply to cell phones now, because you mentioned just landlines.
I didn't mention landlines.
Oh, was that, oh, was that Ron? Okay.
That was wrong. And no, that has been fixed.
That's been fixed. So why would, why would the revenue go down?
That's my question, too.
The revenues have gone down because people don't have landlines.
I know that. But, but we're getting revenue, we should be getting revenue from cell phones now.
The issue is, I think, not to put words in Mr. All's mouth, but as I understand it, the reduction in having two, one account instead of two is resulting in a net revenue reduction. Plus, there are cellphone providers that have made those things cheaper than they once were. But yes, we are, from a power standpoint, are, the issue that was about eight years ago or so has been solved. And we are getting utility use tax on both landlines, to the extent they still exist, and cellphone revenue.
Correct.
Yeah, I
But the, why the numbers are going down, it's not a power issue, it's a
Is it that much, is it that much less to have that than to have a single landline?
I mean, I've never had a landline.
Well, I'm, I'm just
The numbers are my age.
That justification did not seem, that justification did not seem
Yeah, I would defer back to finance staff on that.
I think there's more to that, because I don't think that's, accounts for the, the steep reduction. Where's that? Could you put up that slide for just a moment?
Sure.
I was stuck on that too, just so you know.
I, I, I would be interested in knowing why that number's so low, beyond that. If that, I just
I would think we could get our consultants on that, no?
So there, there's a few things. One is the landlines. Two is that there actually has been a reduction in costs and the city has taken advantage of that, where we have our telephone services VOIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol. And that reduced the city's expenses for actually all of our landlines. So it's, it's a number of factors, but it is that there's less telephone charges that are being done. How many of your offices had extra fax lines that you don't have today?
Okay.
And Ron, do we
Right? I mean, it's just, it's technology, right?
And I'm sorry, it's also
Technology changes.
Unlimited long distance created the drop in that curve.
I could see that.
Yeah. Also, if I could, if I could, Mr. All, as I understand it, when folks shift to VoIP, that still picks up on the UT, but it might shift from the phone bill to the cable bill. But either way, they're being taxed.
Correct, but it's also
They're not being taxed on cable. We don't tax them.
We don't have, our UT doesn't cover cable.
Ron, it would be interesting if maybe we could see if this trend has happened in other communities.
Yes.
Yeah, I can, I can look at that. Not every community has a UT, by the way, but I can take a look.
The ones that do have the UT.
Right, right. I can, I can see if, what they've done or what they've experienced with their phone.
Okay. Two more issues. One, I am still interested, because it came up, in getting additional sheriff services when they're, when they're available. As we know, they're not available right now because of the, the freeze on, on additional. So I know we got some, we talked about some quotes and some prices as to what that would be, but I am interested. I would note that when I joined the council in 97, there was, 35% of our budget was with the sheriffs. It's now down to a fifth. And I know there's economies of scale, but we have not really kept pace with the growth in the community in terms of our patrolling. And at this point, with, especially with the increase in residential burglaries and the traffic patterns such as they are, where people are just not following rules of the road, I think we need the additional service. Final comment is, I'm, I'm going to reserve judgment on the sales tax issue. I'm not opposed to adding the 0.75% tax, but I don't want to go through a whole campaign and have it on the ballot and all that if, if we come back and hear from the consultant that it's not likely to pass. It would seem like a waste of time and money and effort and not generating goodwill. This may not be the best time for that tax at this, at this point in the economy. But, but we'll see. We'll see what the results are. Do we know when that, you said it was coming in June?
That's correct, council member. So we're anticipating right now for the June 26 meeting. And so FM3 will do that second survey beginning next week. They'll compile the data and then we'll have that prepared and presented at the June 26 meeting.
Okay. It, I, I guess that's okay. It's just that because of our break and the deadlines, we're going to get those numbers and we're really going to have a few days to look at it. And then we're going to have to make a decision in one night. So I don't know if that's a great idea or not. Maybe we could have the results of the survey posted earlier. I don't know how everyone feels.
So council, you, you will get those results earlier. So once the data is, or the surveys are done and the data is compiled, we'll be scheduling one-on-one and/or 2-2-1 meetings with each of the council members. That information has to be published and put out by June 19th, a week before our June 26 meeting. And so we will have that information to the public a week before, and hopefully to council anywhere from five to seven days before that, so you're able to at least start looking at those trends and seeing what, what was similar, what changed between the two surveys.
Well, let me ask the city attorney then. I'm sorry, this, this question's kind of going on. But if we have it on the June 26 meeting, everything has to be on that meeting, right? The resolutions to make
Unless the council were willing to look at July.
But what has to be on that meeting? Like, somebody's going to have to write the ballot statement, right?
That's already been written. The resolutions that need to be adopted have already been drafted.
So everything's ready to go?
Correct.
Who's in charge of seeing who's going to sign the ballot statement?
That will be up to the council. If the council, that is a blank in the res, who, who will sign the arguments is a blank. We will look for council direction on it. But the, the laboring oar on the drafting is already done.
Okay. But what has to be decided that night?
Whether or not to put the sales tax on the ballot and who will sign the arguments. Whether or not to put the sales tax on the ballot and who will sign the arguments.
Has to be decided that night?
Correct.
Okay, so.
And on the arguments piece, it could just be any member of council who submits an argument, and then the clerk will select if multiple arguments are submitted.
It would be helpful if ahead of that time, we get a list of things that have to be decided that night?
Sure. We can put that together.
Because it's going to go very quickly, and we don't have any margin for error.
And just I've made it clear, I will not be present at that meeting.
Oh, you're ditching.
No, no, I have a family commitment that.
What are you going to do on Zoom?
It's still TBD, so I've made that clear from the beginning, that that was the one meeting I was going to be missing.
Is it possible that we could start the meeting earlier? It's too soon to discuss that.
If we start it super early, because I'm going to be with a big time zone, time difference.
When's the Open Space Initiative going to be on the council's agenda?
It'll be that same night.
Yeah, that's, I think, we can't move it up to June 19th.
It has to be a regular.
The Open Space, we might be able to.
The Open Space could be June 19th.
Because that doesn't have to be on a regular meeting.
I think that's important, that we not stuff that meeting with a lot of things like that.
Yeah.
Can we do that, please?
Yes, we'll, we'll know as we meet, I think, this week on that, and we'll look at that timeframe.
And we're trying to figure out if we can move that meeting earlier.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we can't, because it has to be a regularly scheduled meeting at a regularly scheduled time. If we change the time, we have to change that from the entire future, not just for that meeting.
No, we can give options for start times.
We could adopt a resolution that had a variable option, start time at 6:00 or 7:00 PM. The current resolution says the regular meeting starts at 7:00 PM. We would have to adopt that resolution on June 12th, and then that would have to apply with the variable option going forward. So, you'd have to adopt a resolution June 12th, change the start time for June 26th, which is a choice, if the council wanted to do it.
And what we'll do, council, is Matt and I will work on that resolution for the June 12th meeting. Council, that at least gives the council an opportunity to discuss and decide on that resolution on that June 12th meeting and have that discussion, because we don't have it agendized for tonight. Our next meeting would be that June 12th, and so that would be the only time to consider and discuss that resolution.
All right, that was the end of my questions.
Okay. Ed?
Thank you. And before I make some comments, I really want to thank, I know you've been thanked enough, the Budget Committee. I think of myself, if I was on there, how much time I would have had to put in, the effort to get it right. And you don't get it right, right away. You got to do it over and over and over, so we all know. So, we appreciate it so much. And City Manager, I like what you said earlier about making the distinction between sustainability and resiliency. That's really what this is all about. When it comes down to what our decisions are going to be, where we can save some money, where we can't, what type of city are we going to be, and what type of city are we going to become? There's not a lot of choices. If you're in private practice in the business, you can make new products, you can reinvent yourself, you can do advertising, you can make more business happen, you can cut expenses. There's a lot of flexibility, and there's a value in that. But we're a municipal government, and we're obligated, the benefit is, we have revenue that comes in ching-ching, very steady, but we don't have the opportunity to expand the revenue. And so, investigating the sales tax idea and the concept is important for us to do that. There's so much at stake here. Our options are very, very limited. And when you think about my period on the council in the past two years, last year, we had wiggle room, we were in the green. City Manager, you can correct me a little bit, but I think it was 150,000. And this year, we're a little bit over 100,000. And that's not a lot of wiggle room for a budget of our size, our revenue and our expenses. It's almost insignificant. There's no margin for error. We can only be hopeful. So, appreciate us looking at every corner to try to save some money. I think one of the most important things, you know, I look at the list of all the things that we had, that we have future items. I was just doing it for giggles, but it wasn't funny. All of these are valuable. I can go down the list. Every one of us has things that are important to the community. And yes, I had the tenants and swim center with the air conditioning, and that's actually a million five. So, the idea of financing it is excellent. That'll save a lot of money. But there's others. Whether it's the senior center, whether it's, you know, I can go down the list. It's irrelevant, because they're all valued. Just happy the way it's working out. I think we're doing as thorough a job as we possibly can. I looked at all the numbers with you, and I know we're going to make the right decisions as it comes down, so those are my comments.
Thank you so much, Ed, and I'll go through mine as quickly as I can. You explained about the vehicle license fee, how it's not really vehicle license fee, so I appreciate that. We talked about the UUT. I definitely support an increase in sheriff services whenever that is possible. I really don't think there's a single more important issue in this community than public safety, and I know that sentiment is shared by our community. So, whatever we have to do to do that. I wanted to go over in the staff report, on page six, under general fund expenses. I asked these earlier to Kindon, but I thought they were important questions to ask to the pub, so the public can hear the answers. The increase in the city clerk budget from the current revised estimate in '23, '24 to '24, '25, do you want to explain that?
That is our election expenses. That happened every two years.
And Mayor, on that same page, if you look at the actuals for '21, '22, I'm sorry, let me get that right. Twenty-two, twenty-three, you see that amount. So, it's cyclical. What, it goes up for the election, drops down, up for the election, then drops down.
It would be great, like, moving forward, if we had some, like, asterisks, just because those are important things, I think, to know. We talked about the city management budget. There was an increase?
Yeah, the increase in the city manager's budget is an increase in a specific contract with a company called MRG, and that is helping us out with, it's management consulting for the city and specifically dealing with certain human resources issues that the city is, is going through right now.
Street maintenance?
Street maintenance is the increase in the general landscaping. We actually talked about that a lot with Peter and David. And so, this is our general landscaping for everything that is the responsibility of the city. So, it's not in the landscape maintenance district, not in the lighting district. So, it's the city medians and the sides of the roadway that are strictly the city. And we've increased that, the cost increase in that contract was substantial from, from last year.
And is that also because labor costs from the contract side have gone up? I mean, our services are staying the same, but the cost of our contracts are going up?
Correct.
That's correct. And Mayor, if I could just add to that, we are very fortunate to live in a community where we have so many landscape lighting assessment districts to cover those green belts, medians, rightaways, and so forth. That provides an amazing beauty to our community. So, what, this line item is just those areas that are outside those landscape lighting assessment districts. So, these would be our medians, roadways, and so forth. And that, that is about $41,000 a month, just to maintain those from the general fund outside of the landscape lighting assessment districts.
And then, the decrease in code enforcement?
The decrease in the code enforcement is this current fiscal year, we've had a lot of cost for code enforcement in this current fiscal year. Next year is basically an average of what we spent on code enforcement over the last eight or nine years. In some years, code enforcement is all of $10,000 for the actual outside contract. This year, it's about $100,000 for that contract. It's just based on the activity that is, is happening in any one fiscal year. So, we, I have budgeted basically the average, like I said, over the last number of years, and plugged that into the budget, because this year was such abnormally high.
Thank you. And then, can you help me in the budget and brief document over here?
Yep.
Where it says budget revenues and expenditures, it says the fiscal year 2024, '25 proposed city budget shows revenues of 79.7 million with expenses of 86.2. This results in a deficit of 6.5 million. But then, when I look at this chart here, it's a different number.
What I factored into the second chart that you, that you have mentioned is that we factored in that some of those projects are going to be reimbursed in the future. And that's where I tried to call it out at the bottom of that chart, where it says ARPA and grants on the second to the last line item down at the bottom.
On here?
On the citywide budget.
So, when it talks, and then you go on, the decrease in fund balances due to the proposed capital and.
Correct. Right.
Infrastructure, but this is using money, but it doesn't say specifically about the reimbursements in this paragraph. Can we add that there?
I can definitely do that, Mayor.
Okay, because I think that's.
Yep.
So, and then this deficit, because I know, I'm so pleased that our general fund budget is balanced, but I'm looking also at the bigger picture of our entire citywide budget, which is equally as important. Will any of this million dollars have reimbursements?
No.
Okay, so that is the true deficit?
Yes.
Okay. And is that also, like, because, can you explain that in more detail?
Yeah, so, just again, with that, so if we move forward with the solar and energy retrofit project, that number would drop drastically. Because what we would do is roll those costs into a long-term plan for that. Now, it may not, which means we wouldn't do the roof this next fiscal year. We would do that maybe at the end of the fiscal year, beginning of '25, '26. And so, ideally, if we can, if there's an appetite for that, that would be rolled into that, and it would be dropped considerably. I don't have those numbers of what that would be yet.
That was my next question.
Yeah.
Can you estimate a little bit?
Not yet.
Because we don't want to see a million dollars, we don't want to see that much money for a citywide budget deficit.
Correct. So, yeah, we don't have those numbers. We, we are working with an outside consultant who is looking at the project. And I think wisely, by the Budget Task Force, our budget subcommittee, they directed staff, and again, I think it was a brilliant idea to bring in a third party to review the numbers of the solar energy retrofit company to verify their numbers. And so, we're in that process right now. In fact, Scott is meeting with that group tomorrow, and so we'll know more, but we don't have those numbers. With, with that number in the red, you know, Mayor, we've talked about this. It's, you know, at some point, we have to invest in that infrastructure, and so I know that it's hard to see the red. In a very simple term, it's almost as if a family, a household, made $100,000 every year, but they had $30,000 in the bank for a new car. So, when they buy that new car, they've spent $130,000, and so they've gone in the red, but they've had that in the bank. That's what we're doing, is we're using our savings account. So, it's, we're spending more than what we're bringing in, but we're buying or investing in that infrastructure that we need.
No, it's, I mean, obviously, that's something that we've seen with our parks. We didn't, we didn't plan accordingly, not under Erica, but we didn't plan. And now, we're paying the price for that with all of our aging infrastructure. But I think it's important, as we discuss, a potential sales tax increase. This attachment A, these things are really important. Increased sheriff deputy presence, private security patrols, more cameras, open space cameras, speed radar cameras, earthquake insurance. I mean, this list goes on and on. And I think it's important for the community to understand, these things are not being funded right now. We don't have the money to fund this. Correct?
That's correct. Everything on that list is not in this budget.
Right.
Right now.
These are really the most, in my opinion, for us to move forward as this premier community, these things have to happen at some point, one way or another. But I just really want us to, like, as we're messaging out to the community, talking about the reasons that this is even on the table, because I don't think there's anyone up here who would ever support a tax increase. It's just, we're dealing with some circumstances and times that I don't think anyone could really predict. And a lot of other cities, that's another important message to get out. Malibu, Culver City, Burbank, the list goes on and on of other cities. And at some point, I hope you can discuss about what the county might do or the state. These are things that, we're just, I've said this before, we're running out of time to get this information across to the community. And I think if people understood that they might end up paying a sales tax increase, but the money might go to the county and not us, people might feel differently, but I just, we're just working on such a tight timeframe. And I've said this from the beginning, we have to get this information out. Most people are not watching our meetings right now, but I think if anyone is going to have to pay an increase in sales tax, they'd rather the money go back to their own city. So, I just want these, these facts communicated to the broader public, so.
Yeah, and you'll see in that full presentation in June, all of that information. And then, that will be shared over the summer, all the way up through that, that election cycle.
Right, and I think that's where we differ. I like that information before we make, to the community, before we have to make a decision, so that people are weighing in and they're understanding why we make the decision, why we vote in favor or not. But if we're getting that information after the fact, it's harder.
Yeah.
So, if we can.
And part of that is this meeting tonight. This was, you know, something that we've really tried to advertise to the community to watch, to pay attention to, because of having these discussions. And it goes again, you know, Councilman Albrecht, you picked up on this. It's that difference between being financially or fiscally resilient and sustainable. We can limp along, and we can do some of these repairs from time to time, but at some point, we're going to draw on that savings account so much that it's not going to replenish.
And I think if people heard that, they would understand that. I just think people aren't hearing it. And we're, what is it, May 22nd? We're going to be discussing this in one month without, we just have to.
And now that we've had this meeting and the council's aware of it, we can start sharing this more with the public. But part of that was being, making sure that the policymakers, you, who are the ones who oversee this budget, understand where we're at now and where we're heading in the future, so we can share that with the public.
Right. Okay. And that is, those are my comments, and I appreciate the time you took earlier today to discuss these. And Ron, Kindon, David, and Peter, thank you. I know it's a ton of work, so, thank you. David?
Very, very well said. All the comments are well received. I just wanted to thank you for putting in the pie, AKA donut, charts, which are appreciated by some, and hopefully the public as well. But I just wanted to say, I am very big on keeping, and I know we all are, keeping our reserves as high as possible in the city. And to me, that is for an emergency, for, for, gosh forbid, an emergency such as a fire, earthquake, pandemic, something unforeseen, economic downturn or beyond that. And so, I am always pushing for not the 50%. I know that's our baseline. That's our bottom line, as I view it. So, I understand we may have to in the future sometime use it, but the reason we've discussed in the Budget Committee and with both of you, things like the entire attachment A, because we all want, there's not one of us here that doesn't want public safety and increased safety for our community. There's around the civic center, all properties, our staff, open space, whatever it might be, private if partnership if we have to. So, that's number one, emergency preparedness, another. And we talk about services, and they're all over the attachment A. I know we're not identifying specific uses, but these are the reasons why we're even considering or going to consider this sales tax item. And as the mayor said, none of us want to even use those words, but we're in a position where we want to look forward and make sure the city is in the best possible situation in the future. So, thank you.
I have one card from Brian Cameron. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please fill out a card. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please fill out a card.
Thank you. It's getting late. I'm Brian Cameron. I live in Calabasas. Is it on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Brian Cameron, I live in Calabasas. The, one of the things I've heard and appreciate is the city's use of public partner, public-private partnerships as a means of a force multiplier, if you would. It provides additional resources in terms of, you know, bodies, minds, hearts, in making our community even better. And in looking at the, particularly because I, as the president and co-founder of Emergency Preparedness in Calabasas, my focus is on getting the city prepared for the next natural disaster to the extent possible. And I just appreciate your focusing on that issue. It benefits us all, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any more council comments? Okay, then we will receive and file the city manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2024 to '25 and 2025 to '26, and it'll come back on June 19th.
Correct. We'll be back on June 19th with, to answer the questions that came up tonight, and then for final adoption. And if not that night, we'll roll it over to the June 26 meeting.
Okay, now we'll move to informational reports. Check register for the period of April 27th to May 10th. Does anyone have any questions regarding the check register? Okay, any task force reports? I'll start with Peter.
Yes, I'd like to report that I attended the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy meeting on Monday, and amongst the items that we discussed, the best news was that the California state budget posed a number of clawback items, where in an attempt to balance the budget, a number of things that were approved in previous items were going to be taken back. One of them that was at risk was a $5 million grant for the purchase of open space that's being entertained here in the city of Calabasas, and it has been not put on the chopping block. So we are in the process of doing, the Open Space Task Force has asked to get an appraisal of the potential properties in the city of Calabasas that we could buy with that money, and I'm glad to report that that money is still alive and well.
Thank you. James?
Yes, I attended last week the annual municipal seminar of the California Contract Cities Association with Councilmember Albrecht. Our city manager and our assistant city manager brought back a lot of good ideas, I think, and had a chance to network with various public officials. League of California Cities is having its quarterly general membership meeting on June 6th, and I'll be attending. I don't know if anybody else will. Kindon, I think you're going as well. So we'll bring back anything from that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one report, and that is our economic development task force. We'll be meeting next week, looking forward to it. Michael Klein will be part of that, and we'll report on that to our subsequent council meeting.
You can go.
All right. I have a bunch. I'll be quick. First of all, we had a great mayor's youth council meeting. The mayor already talked about that, so I will pass on to the fact that we had a fifth grader mock council and tour here meeting, and they made it very clear they want to bring Menchies back to the commons. It was almost unanimous. I think we might get a letter on that soon. Also, we had our very, actually, our second meeting of the Recreation Youth and Senior Services Task Force meeting with Erica and Scott and Mayor Wayne Tribe and I, and we discussed all the parks and a number of other things upcoming, things upcoming, opening in the summer quite a bit, very, very exciting. And then the first ever infrastructure and technology meeting we had as well, which was actually fantastic, and I know a lot of things are coming forward on that as well. Two to three times, we met, the Budget Committee met, and I attended the Valley Economic Alliance Steve Allen Awards for Youth at Pierce College, where one of the winners of the Academic Decathlon National Championship was El Camino, and it was really nice, hosted by Valley Economic Alliance, and Bill Allen, who's the son of Steve Allen, for those who are a little older than you, who might know who Steve Allen is. And last but not least, attended the SCAG Legislative Communications and Membership Committee, where we had briefings on federal and state budget and the major cutbacks, clawbacks, I call them cutbacks, by the governor, including a number of items related to SCAG's initiatives on behalf of all of us pertaining to housing. And it's, and I mean, I'll try and keep it short, but it's odd that there is a push or mandate for housing, I may sound like someone else here, and then there are cutbacks at the same time of the incentives or those potential funds to help build housing and affordable housing throughout Southern California. So we're gonna keep advocating before June 15th and the final budget comes out. Thank you.
Thank you. I won't repeat what was already done. I attended the Parks Meeting, Mayor's Youth Council Meeting, Infrastructure and Technology Meeting, and we had our COG meeting. We received a report from Captain C2 that drones are now approved for use in the open space to help with a variety of issues, which is a really big deal. I'm also gonna read two things. So, the governing board of the COG approved the city manager's recommendation that the COG explore a public-private partnership with a qualified internet service provider to operate and maintain the COG smart cities fiber network. So that was a big item. And then also, the governing board approved a resolution opposing the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Initiative sponsored by the California Business Roundtable, that it will appear on the November 2024 ballot, which we also did, but now it's formal, formal by the COG. That's it for me. Kindon, do you have anything to add?
Mayor, just two quick items. As many of you know, this week is Public Works Week. It's an opportunity for us to recognize and celebrate our Public Works team. I was able to spend a little bit of time with them this afternoon. You have a great Public Works team. They love what they do. They do wonders in our cities. We're so glad to have them. In that same light, and just thinking, we had a great presentation on our zero emission buses. One of the things that we are talking about at the staff level is a public works yard. If we're going to have electric buses, we need a place to charge buses. And so I'm glad that there's a little bit of a delay for a couple of years before those buses come, but we will be talking to you about some ideas that we've had and bring that forward at a future meeting.
Thank you. And if I can just add, I actually think the community also really appreciates our public work staff. Like, they acknowledge what happens, so good job to you and your team. So are there any requests for future agenda information items?
I want, I do wish to make sure that we don't forget that we still need a memorandum regarding the charter cities versus general law cities.
Was meeting with the team on that today, and that'll be out to the council by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. So if there, anything else? No. If there's not anything else, we will adjourn to a regular meeting scheduled on Wednesday, June 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, and just wanted to wish everyone graduating before our next meeting. Congratulations. Thank you. Good night.